I see the recording has started. Thank you very much. So I'll go ahead and read our emergency statement as usual. As Chair of the Pembroke School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting via telephone and computer. We're utilizing Cisco Webex for this electronic meeting. All of the board members have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through the dialing of the following phone number, 14084189388, or by clicking on the following web address, sau53.org. Click the Remote School Board Meetings banner and find today's date for Pembroke. We previously gave notice of the public, to the public, of the necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or through telephone. Instructions have also been posted at the website, sau53.org. If any, we're providing mechanisms for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If you have any trouble accessing the meeting, please let Sandy know. That's S-V-A-L-I-N-E@sau53.org. In the event the public is unable to access this meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done via roll call vote. Let's start the meeting with roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So we'll do roll call attendance. Gene? We lost Gene for a second. Amy?
Present and alone. Hi, everybody.
April?
Present and alone.
Anne?
Present and alone.
Gene?
Present and alone.
And I'm Andy and also present and alone. So we are going to mess around with the agenda a little bit tonight due to a couple of special circumstances. We have somebody that may, we have a member, a board member that might not be able to stay for the whole meeting. We also have a couple of guests. So I do want to get through, if we can take care of the minutes quick, and then we'll do public comments, and then we'll talk about how we're going to rearrange things. Excuse me.
This is me. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting as proposed.
Thank you. That's the August 18th. I'm sorry, that's the September 1st. September 1st meeting, yes. Is there discussion? Thank you, Gina. Are there, is there a discussion around the September 1st minutes?
Andy, this is April. September 1st minutes were not on the agenda to be reviewed or discussed, so I did not review those.
Okay, that's, that's okay.
Same with me, Andy. I only reviewed the ones on the agenda on August 18th.
I made a mistake on my motion. It should be the August 18th minutes that I'm moving to approve.
Okay, can you still look over the second?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I was bad, too.
Thank you. Okay, so is there a discussion around the August 18th minutes? Amy, I thought you were just being really efficient.
I do like to do that, but alas.
I'm trying to unmute to say no.
Okay, last call for discussion on August 18th before we take the vote. All right, on a roll call vote to approve the minutes of the August 18th meeting, Amy?
Yes.
Anne? Gene?
Yes.
April?
Yes, did Anne have a response? Because I did not hear Anne.
I think I caught the end of a yes, but do we, Anne, can you just verify?
Yes, this is Anne, yes.
And Andy's a yes. Thank you very much. So Agenda Item Number 3, Immediate Business. Let's do public comment. So we have 15 minutes for public comment, a little bit of review in case you haven't joined us on one of these remote meetings yet. The call-in stuff gets a little bit tricky, so what we'll do is we'll ask you, if you're on the computer, to please locate and use the raise hand button if you've got something that you want to contribute to public comment. Mr. Motica, as our host, will go through those hands. The public comment section is limited to 15 minutes. We will try to do 10 to 12 of hands, if there are that many. Once the hands are finished, we will open up a block of phone lines at a time. And when I say there are some phones open, if you're on the phone at all, and you want to talk, just go ahead and state your name. If you're not unmuted right then, I just won't hear you, and you can do it the next time. But if you state your name and I recognize you, you've got the floor. So let's give it a whirl. Chris, if there's, if there are any hands raised, we can start those.
There are no hands. Oh, we do have one. We have Tim Girardi. Tim, you have the floor.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Just wanted to make a couple of comments, observations around really how things have been going so far this school year. So coming through the first two weeks of remote learning, you know, again, I think I articulated this last meeting as well. Things were going all right for, for my daughter, who's in the, in the middle school, and my son, who's in third grade. The bandwidth issues that caused teachers to not be able to really engage with the students for more than, you know, a short period of time, you know, again, you know, that was something that was unacceptable, and really, really hope that on, on off days that things will be able to improve from that regard as well. And, you know, really just want to call out, in addition to that, you know, the recent issue around the busing that took place. I mean, I'm certain that'll come up. I hope it'll come up during this meeting, because that, that caused just so many issues with parents. I mean, there's, there's parents who have jobs, I mean, and they have to adhere to certain guidelines within their, with their employer, and it's just the, the, the constant changing and lack of communication around changes and the failure to really just have our kids be in school, have it be seamless for the parents, and give us really the services that we're paying for in an appropriate fashion. I'm really not happy at all with how things are unfolding, and I'm very, very concerned with how the balance of this year is going to, going to go. So I'm very interested, as always, to hear how this meeting is going to go, and the topics that'll be discussed. My hope is that we will hear, if not tonight, very soon, a plan of how everything will be corrected, things will be seamless within the school system, and like I say every meeting, we just get our kids back into school so that they can have some, some normalcy, whatever that'll look like, because right now is not working, and there are a number of parents that I speak to that, that agree with me on this, and hopefully we can come to some resolution very quickly. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Chris, do we have other hands?
We do not have any other hands up right now.
Okay, let's take maybe the first three callers. So a reminder, if you're on the phone, some of you are unmuted right now. If you've got something you want to chime in on public comment, go ahead and state your name. Okay, not hearing any. I think we can hit all the rest of them, Chris, there's only four, right?
Correct.
Perfect. So the remainder of the phone lines are now open. If you are on the phone and you've got something to contribute, please state your name.
Lauren Dwyer?
Okay, go ahead, Lauren. The floor is yours.
Hi, I would just like to thank everyone for the hard work that they have been doing. What happened with the buses, you know, it's very unfortunate, but my understanding also was that the school was not made aware of this until yesterday, and they tried extraordinarily hard to be transparent with what had occurred. I do have to say that my daughter in PRS, we are receiving excellent services, and I just wanted to say thank you, and to essentially continue the course to keep our staff and our students safe, and it is appreciated, everything that all of you are doing. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lauren. Chris, do you want to just open number nine and number seven one more time, just in case they?
No problem. There you go.
Thank you. Last call, if you're on the phone, and you've got something to contribute, go ahead and state your name. All right, I think we're good, Chris. And we'll do one last check since we're still below time for hands.
No other hands. I would just ask Mr. Girardi to put his hand down in case he decides to raise it later for the next public comment.
Perfect. Then with that, we will close public comment and move on to Agenda Item 3B, which is Agenda Review. So I do want to move a couple of things up. Agenda Item 3F is bus routes. I'm guessing that there is some interest from the community on that tonight, and we also have guests, I believe, on the phone. So I'd like to move that up first, and then, as I mentioned, we've got a board member that may have to scoot a little early. So I would like to, after bus routes, move into non-public session if it's needed, Patty, and then we will come back and continue the rest of the agenda in the order that it's presented. Is that okay with everybody?
We, we do have a non-public for small letter C, and we do have need for a non-meeting at some point, and I would just also remind everyone that the three school nurses are here to do a presentation as well.
Yeah, I saw that, and let's, I meant to say we should move them up. So as soon as we are done with bus routes and on public, we'll go to the school nurse presentation. And what was the other thing you just, oh, yeah, I just wanted to note, Patty said we need non-public for small letter C. Small letter C is matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. So just to get that out there. So with that, I guess I will have, Patty, do you want to speak to the bus situation, or do we want Amber to do that before we kind of let the, the folks on the phone?
Amber's here, and I believe she's ready to do an update on where we're at with transportation. And I can certainly add anything to it that you need me to.
Andy, this is Anne. Are we going to discuss the agenda review after?
Yeah, we'll go through the rest of it after this stuff.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So just to give you an update, as you all are experiencing, I'm sure it's been a bit of a struggle for transportation. We've been working nonstop to try to get information out to the families as soon as we receive it. As gentlemen mentioned shortly ago, we did just receive the bus routes yesterday, and we were in full communication the last several weeks as well through the, the weekend in order to get these done for the families. There is a big struggle because we are down bus drivers. We have four bus drivers now instead of the typical amount that will serve all eight buses. So we are needing to run double routes in order to get all of our students that have elected to ride the bus to and from school. So that has been a challenge. We're just kind of working through those. We're working through it with Dale in order to perfect what has already been given out. It will, it will continue to be a working process until we get this right. I understand people are frustrated, and we apologize for that. As soon as we knew information, we got it out as quickly as we could. As Patty mentioned, our bus company is on with us this evening, so they will be available for questions and so forth as well. We, the bus routes that were given, I don't know if, if there's questions on it or not. There were typically eight routes. We did request for them to move it down to, to four. So typically, where there's eight different colored bus routes, we've moved it down to a yellow, a white, a pink, and a green. So that's a little bit different than previous years, and we had to do that because we only had four bus drivers.
So Andy, I would just add to that, that obviously the bus routes have been posted, and they were put in your drive a little while ago. I think our level of frustration and disappointment comes in the fact that students are getting to school late, and students are getting dismissed early at Three River School. Students are missing their entire last period of the day. So that's what Amber alluded to about continuing to work on this, because we find that unacceptable. I understand that there are no drivers, but, you know, we also don't have staff at school in order to leave students there as originally proposed to come and pick them up. So we definitely need solutions, and that's why we've, I think, why the board asked Dale to attend tonight, so maybe give us some ideas on things that they're working on.
Great. Thank you. I, I know that this is something that the community is frustrated with. I also know that you guys have been working on it. I know when Amber says "nonstop," I know that you guys, that you and Amber and much of the administration worked through the weekend, this weekend, and so I definitely appreciate those efforts. I think, Chris, I think that Call-In User 2 and Call-In User 3 are our guests from Dale. If you want to unmute those guys, I hope those are the, well, there's two 508 numbers, so I guess I'm not 100% sure. Patty, what?
We noticed that, too.
Sorry. So a couple of the folks on the phone are muted. Kelly, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm with you guys, and Linda is with me as well.
Linda, are you unmuted correctly?
She's on with my phone on the same line.
Oh, okay. I mean, are you on 603 number?
Yes.
Okay, so Chris, maybe go ahead and mute the other 508. Perfect. So I guess I have one question just to kick things off. I know, you know, the main problem here is that you, you just don't have drivers. What does the process of getting a driver look like? If somebody, if somebody called you guys and had a CDL in hand, had the correct qualifications, is that something that they can be onboarded and, and running these routes within a few days, or is this a weeks or months-long process, or kind of, can you tell me how that works?
Sure. So if they actually came in with all their credentials, they would still have to have, they driven within the last year, they would still have to go through our training program, which our licensed people would be a 14-hour program, which is classroom and behind the wheel, and then we'd have to submit them on a roster to the state in Hampshire, as well as do the background check and all the rehire checks for previous employers, fingerprinting, and all of that. So it would take, doesn't take as long a period of time to do that, depending on those approvals, if they're fully licensed, but the majority of the people that come in do not have any of the certifications. So that takes usually about six weeks, maybe a little bit longer. And right now, the backups at the state, which they're trying to correct, it could take a little bit longer before they can get through the whole process. So that training program is a 35 to 40 hour program, because they're brand new. They don't have any qualifications, so they have more classrooms, and then they have to pass the drug test, of course, all drivers have to do that, and the background checks, and then they go to the state and they take written tests to get their permit, and then they, they work on all their skills behind the wheel to pass a inspection of the bus test, and behind-the-wheel skills like backing and all those things that are necessary. And once they, they do that, then, then they're licensed.
Thank you. A couple of follow-ups, then I'll open it up to the board. Do you, are there, are there drivers in that process right now, or when you say you don't have drivers, is there not even anybody kind of in the pipeline?
There's nobody in the pipeline.
Okay, so. Go ahead.
We continue to recruit, but right now, people wanting to get on a bus with, with kids with COVID and all that, you know, it's less likely that you're going to get candidates even worse than normal, because it's not for everybody. But, you know, a lot of our, and Jeff will speak to this, he's on as well, a lot of our driver pool comes from like young moms or dads, because it's a job where they can take their kids with them on the bus and do the job, and then if they have kids in school, they have the same days off and the same vacations. The other end of the spectrum is retirees. They're looking for something a little extra to do. They're not ready to just plain old retire, so this is a second, a second job that they do for retirement. Of course, both of those right now, you know, it could, you know, may not be comfortable doing that. Older, older folks, which a lot of our drivers in a lot of our districts are not driving right now, because they can't take the chance, the chance, whether their age and, you know, they have any other health reasons. Or with some of the younger people, it could be people at home, you know, if they have older family members that they take care of, and they can't take the chance of taking it back. I think similar to some of the, some of the reasonings that you may have with your staff, with their concerns as well at the school.
Sure, that makes sense. One other question that I had, and I'm not sure if this is something that you can give a concrete answer for, but I'm wondering, I know you guys serve a lot of schools. I believe that I heard through the grapevine that Deerfield is in a similar position that we are. I guess I'm wondering kind of how many schools are in this position, or more to the point, if drivers do come down the pipeline and you have qualified drivers ready to go, how do those get disseminated? How, how, how's the decision made where that, you know, they need to go to our school, or they need to go to Deerfield, or they need to go to wherever else? Like, how does that work?
Well, obviously, we would look at our needs, where they're coming from. If they're coming from the Rochester area or something like that, then they're more likely to go towards Barrington or Stratford if they're opening. If they come over this way, and some people don't care where they go, they come to our, our terminal, and we send them off. We try to, we try to assimilate them with an area closer to them for driving purposes. But we do have, as you asked, we have openings in, we have five or more in Barrington. We have the four elementary routes. While we just filled one, we have three elementary routes and a high school route open in Deerfield. Epsom's got an open route, which I am driving to fill at this point. Raymond has got two routes open. We do nine districts. So there's some everywhere. But Barrington, Pembroke is the hardest here right now.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I usually go last. I don't know why I jumped in there. Board member, I guess I'll go down the line and make things easier. Amy, do you have anything?
Sorry. I just wanted to say thanks to everyone for efforts. You know, the pandemic has put many of us in sort of what feels sometimes like a no-win situation despite lots and lots of great and diligent efforts. So is it a bummer? Yes, but I really appreciate the hard work that everybody's putting into this, and I look forward to improvement.
Thanks. April?
This is April, and in case you guys are not aware, the transportation contract is in our budget binder under Appendix B, if you'd like to reference it. And I'm a little concerned about what appears to be some breaches in contract. We heard that the schedule just arrived yesterday, but according to this, this contract, it states that the schedule is to be presented to the superintendents no later than August 10th of each year. I'm also concerned, I'm not an attorney, but about any possible breaches in the contracts, and I definitely think that's something we should discuss. Thank you.
Thanks, April. Is anybody, I guess, from Dale or from Amber or Patty want to respond to that?
I'm going to ask if it's okay, Chris, to unmute the two 508 numbers, because I believe we also have folks in Massachusetts from STA, and they may like to speak, if that's okay.
Okay, great.
Those two 508 numbers are unmuted.
Perfect. So could somebody from Dale address questions of the contract and agreed-upon dates?
From what my, my name's Jeff Tinbrook, an area manager, and I'm here in Massachusetts. And from what I understand, you know, this is a unique year, and a lot of school districts initially weren't sure how they were going to proceed. And I know a lot of districts sent out surveys to get ridership, to find out who was going to ride, where they lived, and, and where they're going to be picked up, because a lot of folks that don't necessarily have their child get picked up at their residence. So there are a lot of different scenarios that went out. I was under the impression that the, one of the lists that we got from one of the schools, and Kelly, you can tell me which school was, I don't believe we received the survey answers until this previous Sunday. So I think that may have had something to do with holding up the, the routing. And I know that what, what we tried to do was to put everybody down and then eliminate, once we got the surveys, eliminate the students that did not need transportation and go that way as far as doing the routing. Kelly, am I in the arena? Am I correct with that, or am I misspeaking?
Yeah, the other thing is that this year, like you said, was different from other years, where a lot of school districts were struggling with what they wanted to do or what they were going to be able to do, rather than bringing students back, having them remote and that type of thing. So that definitely delayed things more than they, than it would have. And that was the same for every district we did, we do. So that obviously pushed things back as well.
Thanks. So I don't want to, I don't want to get into a big back and forth here, but I'd like to ask Patty or Amber or administration or somebody to respond if we, if we were negligent in getting results, the surveys to these folks.
I'll speak to some of this. I've been in contact with Dale almost on a daily basis, actually, on a daily basis, multiple times a day. They're probably tired of hearing my voice and seeing my emails and phone work come up. I asked continuously last week what was needed. Every time I was told what they needed, we got it to them very, very shortly. At no point last week did anyone tell me that they were waiting for a survey. It wasn't until this weekend that we found out that they were waiting for that. And from my understanding, our principals had previously sent that information.
Okay. April, do you have any follow-ups? Sorry, April, do you have any follow-up questions?
I do. Sorry, I'm having some problems with, with the, with the online meeting. Can you hear me okay now?
Yep.
Okay. You know, I'm not really so much interested in what has happened. We are where we are at now, and what we need is answers on how our students are going to get to school on time and be able to leave from time. And I want to hear some answers, not kind of blaming back and forth, but I want to hear real solutions, and not "we tried our best." This is about our students, and I want to hear what's going to be done for Pembroke students. Thank you.
Thanks, April. So is, is there a plan right now other than wait for drivers?
At this point, there really isn't anything else we can do. There's no other drivers to be had. If we had them, we would. And that's obviously the ultimate solution here, but there aren't any to be had right now.
Andy, follow-up outside of the blocks. How about hiring charters?
I guess Amber or Patty, have we looked at, is that a possibility to hire other buses? Is that doable contract-wise, money-wise, anything-wise?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I'll have to explore that. Definitely, there will be a conversation with Dale in regards to if they can't fully meet our contract, if we have to hire somebody else, there has to be more discussion on how that will be paid. So with that said, busing is an issue statewide. It's not just with Dale. They're having driver issues everywhere. So while we can certainly try to see if we can get somebody else to help out, I'm not sure how successful that would be, but that's not to say that we shouldn't look and have further conversations.
In terms of solutions, we've had a very brief conversation in the past, you know, today, basically, as leadership team, and the only, the only thing I can think to explore at this point is if we're going to get the students to school on time and have them leave on time, is to try and hire staff to supervise the students that would need to arrive early and would need to leave. staff to supervise the students that would need to arrive early and would need to leave late. Obviously, social distancing and staff coverage is just as much an issue as the shortage of drivers. So at this point, only on day one, we didn't have a handle on who the students are, how many got there, on which run. Some parents transported that, you know, they stepped up to try to bring the students in to get them on time. We don't know if that's going to continue. So we certainly are, now that we're in this position, have a lot of legwork to do to try and find solution. If it's a small manageable group of students that we can just hire or try to hire someone to be there early in the morning or in the afternoon, we will certainly pursue that. But this is a brand new problem with new information and we're going to have to try and work with Dale to come up with some solutions if we can.
Thanks. We just lost April. She texted me, she's working on getting back in, so I'll swing back around to her. For now, let me go to Ann.
Thank you, Andy. I have a couple of questions. So when we're discussing the, you know, the double runs, is how many children are on the bus? Can we add more children to the current bus schedule currently instead of doing a double run?
We have 26 students on each bus.
Is that, obviously, that's a full capacity? That's following the CDC guidelines?
That is following the CDC guidelines. Buses hold 77 passengers. Typically, at the middle school and high school level, we try to keep the, because of the size of the child, to a lower number. But the elementary schools, normal, in a normal scenario, we fill the buses. And 26 obviously is under underutilizing, but we certainly understand why they came up with 26 students per bus. But can we add kids to the bus? Absolutely, we can. But then it gets into the social distancing thing and how the the families are going to take that into consideration. And I don't think that that would be looked upon favorably. But to answer your question, yes, we can fill the buses.
So just to be really clear, Dale does not have a concrete policy that they are to adhere to the CDC recommendations. We, as a board, we have instructed our administration and our staff to follow those guidelines whenever, but if we were to pivot on that, the transportation company would not have a problem putting more kids on a bus?
The only, the only issue that I would see that may come from that are as far as the drivers are concerned, because obviously, the drivers are concerned. That's why we lost 20 people over the summer months because of COVID. The four existing employees now may say, look, I'm willing to drive 26 kids, but if I have 50 kids on the bus, I fear for my safety and they may call it a career. I don't know the answer to that without discussing it with them, but that is a that is a possibility. And I know that in other districts, other districts have gone to higher capacities, if you will. And in a lot of my other locations, drivers have have left our employ.
Good, thank you for that information. And others?
Yeah, so any district in the SAU 53 have gone to a higher capacity so far? Or do you not do all of the other districts? Allentown, Chichester, Deerfield, Epsom?
We do not do, I'm sorry, we do not do Chichester. Deerfield went from originally 13 students per bus, one every other seat, to 26 students per bus. But to my knowledge, and Kelly can shed some light on this, I don't believe anybody is over the 26 capacity.
So have you asked your drivers yet? Or is that something that we would have to wait to find out from you? Have you surveyed your drivers if they feel comfortable with more students?
We have, we have not. I'm sorry, Kelly, go ahead.
That's okay. No, yeah, we have not, but we can. Yeah, Epsom just went to full in starting today, so we're carefully, carefully monitoring the numbers there, but they are staying within the 26 as well. So.
So you do not, so you do not transport Epsom students?
We do Epsom, yes. The only time we don't do is Chichester and the SAU. And Epsom just went to school today.
Epsom is in school full time. They have all of their students in. So how many bus?
Starting today, yes. Except for those that chose to stay remote or are doing V-LAC.
Right, so how many students, how many bus runs are you doing for Deer, for Epsom right now?
They have seven. One of the buses is a smaller bus, it's a 30 passenger. So, but they all have, they have many parents transporting, so the numbers are staying down below the 26.
Okay.
One day.
So Andy, the other follow up question I have for you is that if, so Pembroke is now doing double runs. So is Pembroke paying that cost for that second run? Or is Deer, or is the dial transportation?
Amber, do you want to field that one?
We should not be charged for the double runs because we are not even utilizing all of our buses. We were utilizing all of our buses, all of our bus drivers, and we had to do double routes. Then Dale has presented that there would be a charge per day. But since we are not utilizing all of our bus drivers and not utilizing all of our buses, it's my understanding that we would not be charged for double runs. Is that answered? Dale?
Yeah, based on the situation that we're in right now, there's no anticipation to be charging double runs. We certainly recognize that we're not fulfilling our contract. You know, if I had four more drivers than we could, we probably wouldn't be having this phone conversation. But as far as the charging, there's no anticipation to do that right now. As long as we're in the the four bus situation.
Thank you. Andy, I just have a couple more. So is there a way that we could borrow from a district that is 100% remote?
We we actually have utilized people that are doing remote learning. When you started out the year, remote learning, we did utilize those drivers in other districts. We are just horribly short everywhere and there's not that many districts doing remote or total remote to be able to pull from other places. When we have that opportunity, believe me, if we have somebody with a commercial driver's license and nobody's sitting around doing nothing, if they're available, we put them to work.
Okay, and then Andy, another question for Amber. When when April was asking about charter, so when would we look at discussing with another opportunity for charter? Would that be right away? Would that be after our next district meeting, our school board meeting?
To be honest, I'm not sure. I mean, I think it definitely needs further conversation and directive from the board as to the direction they want me, would like me to go in. I mean, I would have to definitely find out more information.
Yeah, I would say, anybody jump in here, correct me if I'm wrong, but Amber, if you can at least do, you know, a cursory kind of, is this even a possibility? Are there buses out there at the at the Greyhound station on Stickney Ave and Concord? Are there buses somewhere that we could use? Are there drivers available? Like, is it possible? And if you could let us know that, then then I think we can kind of give you a better idea of how hard we want to push and how hard we want to pursue it. Does that make sense?
One of the issues with a charter, if you're talking about just a regular city type bus, is the transportation laws require buses to be certified and inspected as school buses, which is why we're not allowed to use vans or taxis or or any other form of vehicles that aren't considered school buses. Not to say a charter might not qualify if we tried, but just keep that in mind.
Gotcha. Amy, I see your hand.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, again, I feel like we might be getting into a little bit of micromanaging things here where we may not need to. I think I heard Patty and Amber say that the situation is unacceptable, that we don't want to have students missing school, and that they are pedal to the metal, doing everything they can to fix that. So I think that what we need to do is have them continue to do that. And if that, if the solution involves, you know, charter buses or hiring staff or, you know, I think it's for them to come up with the solutions, we, I think, as a board collectively have expressed our concurrence in that, that we also think that this is a completely unacceptable situation. And we've provided our direction that we need a solution on ASAP basis. But, you know, can be like waiting for the board to reconvene so we can discuss the options. I don't want to hamstring them. I want them to be able to move forward and solve this as fast as possible. So I just wanted to chime in with that. Thank you.
Thanks. Ann, did you have anything else before I moved Jean?
Yeah, I guess with with Amy's discussion, then maybe the superintendent and Amber would have said, you know, we would need to hire ex-people, you know, in the morning shift or the afternoon shift for this meeting this evening. But the other conversation I had from a lot of the athletes' parents, do we see an issue with the transportation for the sports games so far? I know it's early, but they were just asking that.
That would all come down to the time of day. If they're, you know, the evenings, weekends type thing, that should not be a problem. Anything during school time or drive time will definitely be an issue.
Thank you. I'm all set, Andy. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean?
Pretty much everybody's covered a bunch of the stuff that I that I've had on here. The one thing that it was, you know, we've essentially, we've lost four drivers. But my question to Dale is, these drivers that were lost, and you gave us a basic rundown of why they, you know, they have health concerns, family concerns with COVID and everything like that. But I guess what my question is, did, were these drivers incentivized to come back? Or was it just like, oh, you're not coming back? Okay, great. Because I I know the hours are kind of off for for a normal working day. I don't know what the pay schedule is. But I guess my question is, were these drivers incentivized to come back? If not, can they be incentivized to come back to possibly fill the void that we have right now?
So one of the drivers, as you mentioned, has medical issues right now, is not cleared to drive. One of the drivers was lost at the end of last school year, was the uncertainty of knowing what was coming up this year, went and got a full time job. You can't really compete with that. Another one, just never returned any of our calls, all of our efforts the entire summer since school closed down. We have not been able to reach this person. Tried every way, shape, knocking on a door, everything. Can't even get them to respond to our calls. And another is driving in Allentown because that is better for their family. So they didn't leave the district, they just switched towns. So that's the four.
Yeah, I I will tell you that every year, all of our employees receive financial increases. They are incentivized to come back if they if they refer somebody or bring somebody in. The person they bring in, if they get their commercial driver's license, they get $1,500. The person that refers them also gets $1,500. We have done everything in our power to try to get our folks to come back to work or to be school bus drivers. We're in the $20 an hour range for not everybody, but that that pay range. We have gone up in the last three years, we have increased our wages probably close, if not 40% over the last three years. Have not gone back to any one of our contracts and asked them for any help doing that. We realize that it's very difficult to keep bus drivers. We understand that 2% unemployment in the state of New Hampshire doesn't help because you get into situations where you have a small number that you can attract. A lot of those people cannot pass a drug test. A lot of those people may have a criminal record or some other health reason that may preclude them from holding a commercial driver's license and working with school age students. So the pond gets smaller and smaller. I was on the computer today looking up unemployment. New Hampshire is now 8.1%. I can tell you that we're not getting any of that 8.1%. We have advertised everywhere. We have, we have been on school websites. We have been at schools, hanging signs and putting things on everybody's property as far as where parents would see them when they come in. We have advertised any possible way you can think of. We've hung banners on buses and parked buses in the in various places. We 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 put advertisements, not that it matters now or it could help us now, but we've done things in movie theaters and in bowling alleys. We've gone to golf courses where you get an older retired gentleman who wants to maybe golf and beer money to try to get them to come in. We've done a litany of things and all to no avail. And, you know, the COVID thing is, you know, I don't want you to say, oh, poor guy, oh woe is he? Because that's not what I'm looking for. But what I'm trying to explain is COVID has taken, has beaten us up. As Kelly alluded to earlier, you know, the the older folks that we, that are demographic, they don't want to get sick. Their families don't want them to get sick. We have doctors' excuses that say this person can't come back until they have a proven vaccine. We have the parents that don't want to come to school to get their family sick because a lot of the moms, whether they be single or married, will bring their their kids with them. We're doing, we're open to any suggestion that you may have, but we are doing everything in our power as far as financially, advertising. I would, I would like to make this a commercial. Anybody that's listening, we are taking that patient. I pay for everything. I pay for your testing. I pay for your criminal histories. I pay for your training and your permits and all that. It doesn't cost you a dime. I just need you and your time and your willingness to come in and drive a school bus.
Thanks.
I appreciate that.
All right, I think we've been around the block once. I did have one question. I think I can remember what it was even. Nope, it got away from me. I'll come back to it. So I'll prep to everybody, anybody think of any other questions that you had before we wrap up this discussion?
Andy, this is Ann. So the question I have is, is Pembroke paying their full cost to their contract to dial right now? And if not, would that be a savings that we use towards hiring staff for a supervision of children before or after school?
If you are, we will bill you for the buses that we are running. If there is, you know, you're scheduled to have eight vehicles, we are currently running four vehicles for you, and that's what we expect to be compensated for. I would not, I I'm not going to come to you and say, hey, we would love to have our whole contract honored for a lot of reasons. We're in a cash flow problem right now, but that's not your your fault. But to answer your question, I'm not going to come to you and say, I need, I need you to pay your, honor your whole contract when I can't fulfill it.
Thank you. Remembered mine. Ann, sorry, go ahead. Do you have a follow up?
Well, I was just saying that with Amy's discussion about micromanaging is that would we be able to discuss this evening the money that we are saving to go ahead and allow Patty and Amber to find staffing if they're able to for supervision of children before and after school?
I mean, I'm certainly okay with that. I don't know if, I don't know if Patty needs that. I don't know what fund this comes out of or anything like that, if they're savings from bus, if it's in the bus line, if it can be used for other things.
Yeah, I mean, we can transfer money from the contract line, certainly. You know, this, like I said, this is literally, we just opened school today. So no, we haven't had time to talk to staff about hiring them for before and after school. We will get on that immediately, but you know, like I said, we need to see which students need supervision, which classrooms they're in. We've gone through all these lengths to social distance and keep kids apart. So we would need to make sure that we have room and we have staff that are interested in, in working before and after school. But that's absolutely our first chore to tackle.
Thanks. And that reminded me of what my question was, and it's similar. Patty, do you know if hiring staff for this type of thing, since it is over and beyond and not something we would normally do, is that something that could? I know we've kind of spent all of the COVID money already. But is that something that we could ask to be reimbursed for since it is a COVID-related cost, I would say?
I would say potentially, but we do have our full amount budgeted. We're being told that we may see more relief coming, but this would certainly be an unanticipated COVID expense.
Any other questions from board members before we move on? Okay. I thank the folks from Dale for joining us tonight. Appreciate your input, appreciate your candidness. And we appreciate your continued effort moving forward to do everything you can to, to help us resolve this as, as quickly as we possibly can.
Andy, we do need to approve the routes too, just a reminder.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, then I guess.
And this is Amy. I'll make a motion to approve the routes as proposed.
Second.
Thanks, Jean. Discussion around the routes themselves.
This is Ann. Just one quick question. Will, are they subject to change once we are, are able to be full staffed? Or are these bus routes going to stay solid for the rest of the school year?
No, we would, we would have the ability as the board to, to ratify or, or affirm new routes as they are presented to us.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Amy.
I'm going to vote in favor of the motion, but I just want to say sort of for the record, it's, it's not great condensing the routes this way. You know, kids are having to go really far to get to their bus stops. You know, my kids, along with many, many, many other kids, bus stops were eliminated. So I am voting in favor of this because I understand why this is what we need to do under current circumstances. But I just want to be clear that I am not in favor of these bus routes.
Other discussion?
Andy, this is April. I'm just curious, just a discussion question. Typically, how many stops does a typical bus route have? And how many are included in what was presented to us? Thanks.
Kelly, you're still with us?
Yeah, I'm just going to confer with Linda because she has a better idea of that.
It looks like there's, I just pulled up Yellow Bus. It looks like there's 31 stops, at least for the morning. I don't know what a typical one looks like, but this year's looks like 31.
Yeah, yeah. So Linda's telling me that we only actually condense two stops. A lot of the stops are on back roads, so you really can't. So we're still covering most of the area as we normally would.
Andy, this is April again. I just want to, should that be interpreted as there is limited difference this year as far as the number of stops?
That's what I heard.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, then there's a motion to accept the routes as presented for now. On a roll call vote, I'll go Ann. Sorry, could you repeat that? Thank you, April.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So routes are approved, motion carries. Thanks again, folks from Dale. You're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like to. I'm sure you don't have anything better to do tonight.
We have to get up a bit early and get back to work.
Thanks again. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I lost my agenda here for a second. So, I think, so we said we were going to do non-public next and then we'll take the, the nursing presentation. And then we'll talk about the rest of the agenda. I'm just trying to be conscious of people's times. I thank the school nurses for being with us tonight. I, I don't think we have a ton of business to do in non-public, so hopefully we won't be long. But at this point, I would accept a motion to go into non-public session.
I make the motion to go into non-public session.
This is Amy, I'll second.
Thank you. On a roll call vote, uh, Jean?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes at 7:29 PM. As a reminder to folks, meeting, we'd have to kick everybody out again, but I think that's the only way that we'd be able to possibly do that.
I just resumed the recording, so I'm just going to repeat that it wasn't on the recording. So Ann is asking about the possibility of doing a non-meeting. So I think when you do the agenda review, you need to go back to that. You can decide whether or not you want to recess the meeting to go into a non-meeting. And everyone would need to leave again and then be readmitted if you choose to do that.
Okay, so let's go ahead and, and hear our school nurses' report, which is, sorry, agenda item 3E. I know we're bouncing around a lot tonight. And then when we're done with 3E, we will go back, review the rest of the agenda, see what we still need to catch up on. See if we want to do the non-meeting and, and straighten this mess out. But I'd like to, we've had our nurses on for a little over an hour, so I'd like to give them the floor. I'm not sure if you're all going to present or who's leading the show, but the floor is yours.
Hi, Andy. This is April Barker. I'm going to go through the presentation. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. I don't think there's a way for you guys to kind of see the presentation, but I do believe the board received it. Have you been able to review that at all?
Let me see here if it's in our drive.
No, the presentation was not shared ahead of time.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Would it be possible for you to email it to us all? Because I know I am a visual learner and it would be very helpful to see the presentation and go along with it. That's April speaking. Sorry.
April, do you mean right now?
If it's possible, I would really appreciate that. It'd be so helpful for me to intake that information and follow along. Yes, right now.
Okay, I am going to, Dan, if you're, are you at a computer that you could download that and email it? Do you have time to do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
April Barker, there is a share content button. I don't know if it works or not. Oh, wait, hold on. Sandy's waving her hand at me.
There are a couple of people who say that they're stuck in the waiting room. It's not showing anyone in the lobby.
I wonder, do, when, can you see the top on those, Sandy? If they tried to connect while we were in non-public, it would have put them out there, but they should be back in now.
I tend to method.
Okay, yeah, if they're, if they're still out, let us know. Thank you very much for that. All right, sorry about all that. Oh, wait, now I don't see April Barker anymore. Disappeared on me.
It wasn't her. I was trying to get in.
I'll give her a minute, see if she can reconnect. Not sure what happened there. She probably tried to share content like I told her and it just keener. It's probably my fault.
Okay, I just emailed the presentation in a PDF to the board.
Thank you.
Welcome.
While we're waiting for April to come back, maybe I can just kind of climb in there with a piece of the presentation that I was going to bring to you. Anyway, my name is Allison Dagel. I'm the nurse at Pembroke Academy. And thank you for this format to present to everyone some measures that we're going forth with to secure as best we can as school nurses, the safety of both our staff and our students. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm pleased to announce that we are going forth, the Pembroke Schools, with a collaboration with Convenient MD, which I think a lot of you are probably familiar with. Convenient MD has a program that is available to schools that we can have parents and staff utilize to screen their students before school in the morning, followed by a secondary screening that as school nurses, we can monitor after the kids have arrived at school. And what that means is the parents would sign on to a website specific to the school, whether it be PA, Three Rivers or Hill School. And they are able to put in their AM assessment of their student every day so that we can monitor what students have been assessed for COVID symptoms and related exposure. And then for students that may have either not been screened or missed for one reason or another, as an administrator, all the nurses would be administrators of this program. We will be able to see the students that haven't been screened and then go forth with a screening of our own in order to catch that group. So it would be a secondary screening at school in some ways so that we can ensure more so the safety of our staff and students in the building. Those students that may have any kind of COVID symptoms with this program are directed by it. On what steps to take next. It's very specific, very clear in order for parents to utilize it and to go forth with either contacting their own pediatrician and physician's office or to go forth with a video visit with Convenient MD. They're, they have choices in that. And we can track, trace and report to DHHS, which we are now doing daily for COVID symptoms and related symptoms, exposure, et cetera, that the state has asked us to do. So I'm very excited about this because in researching with other schools, similar in size to Pembroke Academy, myself, I have been a little bit frustrated in trying to find a program that would assist with our assessment because it's a large-scale, as you can imagine, job to do on a daily basis. And this program, I think it's going to make it a little bit more simpler for us and organized and hopefully to, like I said, ensure a better safety measure in our schools.
Thank you. It looks like we have April back.
Hi, sorry about that. Sorry, I got kicked out. I did try the share screen and it went down a rabbit hole, so I'm back.
Yeah, I told you it was my fault, Patty.
It's okay. I thought I would try. So thank you guys for having us on. I missed some of what Allison said, but I know that we're pretty excited about the idea of having some technology to assist us a bit in tracking for the students. But I think the main goal for this is to just give you all sort of a bird's eye view of what we're doing in regards to control measures. And our main goal obviously is to keep the staff and the students safe and also maintain attendance in school and try to stay open for actual in-person learning. So a few things that I'm going to go over are the, kind of the main role for us as school nurses in this. Because I think we've all had to take a bit of a pivot towards COVID. You know, our number one focus. So that being said, we are currently getting a lot of our guidance from the Department of Health and Human Services and the Division of Public Health. They're really the leader for what we should be doing. And they work, you know, cohesively with the CDC. But they're really what we follow because it's based in New Hampshire. And they're working diligently in regards to the cases and contact tracing. So they have provided us with a lot of great information. Excellent guidance. And I think as nurses, we have all sort of taken that guidance in and tried to implement it the best that we can with different control measures in the schools. One main thing that we're also doing, just to try to keep up with all of this information, is we have a weekly call with Dr. Chan, who's the head state epidemiologist. And it's been, I mean, I can speak for all of us, I'm sure, in saying that it has helped us immensely. It's nice because we can hear from other schools and other school nurses, what's working, what's not working. We have opportunities to ask questions and he and his team are amazing in answering all of those questions. And they are a wide range of subjects. So the main thing for us is screening right now. I think that is big on our agenda in trying to make sure that we're having parents screen at home, getting that handled via, right now, just asking them for screening. Hopefully moving into an app where we can gather that data, as Allison had explained. We are all doing a secondary screening when the kids get to school. That can vary from temp change, temp-taking to having the students kind of do a, a, a body check really to see if they're having any symptoms. And if they are, then that kind of brings us into a new realm of how we're dealing with that. The school nursing office is not necessarily used for high traffic. We're trying to keep it as kind of a clean zone as much as possible, but we have developed an isolation room. So that's been another big piece for all of us to make a space in the schools. And it has specific criteria that we do have to follow. And that's the space where if someone, staff or student is having symptoms, that's where we would bring them. We would then have to put on specific protective, personal protective equipment and do a kind of a brief assessment based on the symptoms that they're having. But really, the guidance right now remains if they're having any symptoms, even mild, that we have a call to home and have them picked up immediately. Guide them to call their pediatrician or PCP. And again, the guidance is for testing. And that leads us to, you know, criteria about how long the student or staff member stays out, depending on if they get the test. Some may choose not to get the test. In that event, it would, the guidance again is that we report that to the state. The state would guide that person and us to stay out for a number of days. Right now, it's 10 days. So someone that chooses not to get the test is actually treated as though they have a positive case. And other criteria goes into them coming back to school. No symptoms for 24 hours, no fever, again, for 24 hours. So a lot of different criteria based on the situation. So I think I got ahead of myself a little bit. So the isolation room, that, that's something that we have all kind of have going in each of the designated areas at the schools. that's something that we have all kind of have going in each of the designated areas at the schools. Something else that we've been doing really is training staff, students, reaching out to families, giving them as much education as we can on staying safe at home and in school. Symptoms, you know, the symptom complex for COVID, that hasn't changed too much recently, so we're able to give that out and ask that everyone's self-monitoring. You know, and again, just trying to make sure that everyone understands that the screening piece of this is to keep, keep everybody safe. I think the last thing we want to do is try to make any of the students feel singled out. And again, it just, it goes back to making them feel comfortable with the process and it's the first day for us with hybrids. So I think we're going to continue to get that as part of our routine. And then for us, again, I just want to emphasize that the DHHS is giving us the guidance and they're really the ones that are, from what I can see and talking with other schools, making those determinations. If we did have a positive case, you know, what, what do we do then? They're going to want a lot of information from us as a school. They're going to want seating charts, attendance lists, bus routes, who's, who were they in contact with? And they really do a full investigation with each case and they would then give us the guidance if we need to do nothing, that students removed, they stay in their isolation, they come back when they meet the CDC criteria. Or do we have to close a certain area, a cohort, an area of the building or the school completely? So they definitely are asking for a lot of information from us. So tracking is something that I think we're all doing as nurses where, I know Kathy Mayer is working really well with SNAP, our electronic documentation to make sure that we're able to capture if students are out with any type of COVID symptoms. So if, you know, we're trying to be up on our game to prepare, hopefully we don't have to run into that situation, but having more information, the better. And then I think prevention at school, some of the things that we are doing, and I know some of this was in the plan, is having staff, students and any visitors wear masks and complete a screening. And then what we're trying to really do is make sure that the students have mask breaks as well as the staff during the day because it's a lot to ask any of us to wear a mask for, you know, seven to eight hours a day. So having the mask breaks built in, making sure that the students are letting us know if they're getting to a point where they're not comfortable anymore wearing that mask. And also we've really encouraged trying different masks and making sure that they find one that is comfortable and safe fitting for them, something they feel like they can wear for a while. If a student comes to school and either has a mask that doesn't fit well, a mask that's broken, or they've forgotten their mask, we do have masks for them to wear that we've provided. I had to do that a few times today. A student came in and their mask just didn't fit. It was, in most cases, too big. So we had to adjust or they had to wear one of the disposable masks. Other things we're doing for prevention is, you know, again, asking staff and students to wash their hands more frequently, sanitize more frequently. I know at TRS, we're trying to have them sanitize when they come into the building, also sanitize before, you know, they eat their meal, when they get into the cafeteria. So that's another piece of prevention that we're trying. Another thing too is having social distance and be up in forefront of everybody's mind. So we are asking the students, even with masks on, to try to maintain that six foot distance when they are in, for example, the classroom. The staff have done a really good job about making sure the desks are six feet apart. And again, I know I had spoken with Dr. Chan two weeks ago and we discussed a couple of different situations with assigned seating and, you know, what we might need to do. And he did say having, you know, the masks on and the six foot distance is two great control measures. So I think the fact that we're doing that right now, we're, we're keeping up and hopefully, you know, stopping possible transmission. And then hallways, we're trying to keep flow the same. So one way down one hallway, there's tape arrows so the students know which way to walk. Same thing with stairwells. We're trying to do one-way stairwells. So again, just making sure we don't have a cluster of students in any given area. And then again, continuing education, I know our health teacher has been doing a really great job about educating about hand washing for the students, reminding them, you know, what's the best way to wash your hands? Best way to use sanitizer, best way to use their masks and just continuing to make sure that that's in sort of their forefront. And then with communication, I know last week we had sent out a nursing plan for the parents and students in our Pembroke District just to keep them aware with some of these things that we're doing. And if anything changes, which it could, I think the guidance can change at any given point. We're going to continue that communication with families and give them an opportunity to ask questions. And if they have any concerns, we can discuss those. If there is that potential that we do have a positive case, I think we would definitely work very closely with the state with their guidance, as I mentioned, with the contact tracing. And they would also be providing guidance to that, that family and making contacts with them. After that kind of positive case happens, the state will really take over and give us the next steps that we need to take. And then just the process again for students at school, if they have symptoms, trying to again be discreet. If any student says that they have symptoms, making sure that they get to the nurse or the nurse can meet up with them as quickly as possible. And again, get them into the isolation room and provide that assessment. Make sure they feel safe and calm and let them know, you know, it could just be a cold, it could just be, you know, an ear infection. But we have to err on the side of caution right now and call mom or dad or the guardian and have them get tested. Those are sort of the main things I wanted to go off of. One thing that, you know, I do get asked a lot is if, if I have it or if my student has or my child has it, when can I come back? That we haven't made. It's come down from the CDC and the state. If, if someone does have COVID-19, they test positive. It's that 10 days they have to be out fever-free with no medication for 24 hours and symptoms need to be resolved. And then if, if again, they don't, they choose not to get tested, that is something that we have to report over to the state and then they would stay in that same isolation. So it really doesn't change too, too much. And I think, you know, in regards to contact tracing, it's been very clear that what they're looking for in regards to a potential outbreak or having other students or staff need to be tested is if they have been exposed and the state is qualifying exposure as they've spent more than 10 minutes within a six-foot distance. So they've been less than six feet and they've been more than 10 minutes without their mask on. They've been very clear to say that that 10 minutes can be cumulative, so it could be five minutes here and five minutes there. So again, why we're trying to be a bit more on the strict side and asking for masking and really encouraging social distancing in the case that we do have a positive case. We don't have to send everybody home to quarantine if we can maintain these control measures that would make sure we could keep the kids in school for a little bit longer. And then in regards to closing, again, that's something that public health is helping us make those determinations over the state. If we need to close, a lot of it is based on, you know, what control measures you're doing, the cases that you have and the staff that you have in the building that are able to be there to teach. I think that was it. I don't know, Allison or Kathy, if there's anything you guys wanted to jump in. I hope I didn't talk too much.
No, it sounded good to me, April.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the information. There's a lot of good stuff in this document as well. Board members, do we have any for Ms. Barker?
Andy, this is Anne. I just have a quick question. If the, the state is notified that someone is, has been exposed, we've been seeing a lot of exposure at like sports camps. Do they get in contact with the school or do we wait for the child to tell us?
Are you, are you meaning if one of our students was exposed at like a sporting event, would the state call the school?
Yes, we're, we're seeing some, some children come up positive because they attended a, a sports camp or a game or something.
Yeah.
Is that something that we would wait from the state?
From what I understand, specifically with the Bedford case, they weren't made aware until the student was positive. So it was after the contact tracing was done that they were aware it was from a sporting event. So I think, I don't know that they would contact schools individually if they knew of an exposure. But I think if there was an outbreak, even a small cluster of three or more, I think we would all hear about that.
Sandy's got her hand raised.
Kathy Mayer, the nurse at Three Rivers, frozen. She's going to try to sign back in.
Okay. Oh yeah, I see her. She has a exclamation part, point. Board, other board members with questions for any of our nurses?
This is April and I have a question about what is the name of the phone app that's being utilized in the partnership with Convenient MD?
It's not actually an application in regards to like the typical apps that you see and download on your iPhone. It is actually going to be a website that parents or staff sign into. It is a Convenient MD program that they have developed within their institution and they are offering it to schools in order to utilize for screening measures. So when somebody signs into it, once the webpage has been set up, they will have an identifier, they'll sign into it, they'll fill out the screening for the morning and then that information will be sent that they have been screened to the administrators, which would be my, myself, April, Kathy and most likely Josh Berube. And that's how it works. It's, it's, but it can be utilized from any electronic device. So it can be utilized from your phone, from your laptop, from your tablet, etc. So it makes it pretty easy.
Thank you. That's very helpful. What happens if, I think many of us are parents and understand that life sometimes gets busy and you may forget to enter that information. What happens then if a kiddo shows up without that information log?
Right. Right. And that's, that's the, the best part of it for us as nurses because we realize that that is real life and that happens. Or maybe a family doesn't have access to any internet. I mean, there's multiple, you know, different scenarios. So what happens is those children that have not been screened for one reason or another, that list is sent to us as the administrator. Only, only us will be able to visualize that. And what we can do then is with that list, when those students come to school, we can grab those students, pull them from class or get them on the way in, however we can manage it, to have them screened by us in person so that we can say a screening was done on every student.
Thank you. This is April and I don't really think this is a question for the nurses, but what was referenced was on September 10th, the nursing plan was made available. I don't see that in my board folder. And if that was made available to parents, I think it would be helpful for us as board members to have it available to us as well. Can we get that plan? And that question's to Andy.
Sure. Is that different than what was emailed to us? Is there, is there a separate document that went out?
The health plan was sent home as a one call now and the board members were checked off to receive that and it should have been as an attachment. If someone didn't receive it, just let me know and I can also put it in the drive so that it's handy for you.
This is April. I would like to request that it's in the drive because I did check my email and I did not see it. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for the school nurses? Go ahead, Amy.
Thanks. Thanks for the information and thanks for all your work putting this together. I just wanted to ask for a clarification on the screening. So let me say what I think I heard, which is in the first instance, all of the households do the screening of their kiddos at home. They enter the information. It seems like in these few initial days, it's going to be by paper or, and then we'll eventually get rolling with the Convenient MD. And then on your end at school, there will be screenings only of the kids who didn't do the screening at home or kid who, you know, obviously is exhibiting symptoms. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I, can I just step in? Sorry. So I do think it's a little bit different. I think right now for Three Rivers and Hill School, we are still doing that secondary screening.
For all students?
Yes, for all the students.
Okay.
Yeah, we are currently temping the students prior to entering the building. And then they are also going to have kind of that questionnaire in that first class that they have just to kind of do a self-check-in. So really it's, we're doing a secondary screening at school just to be safe.
Okay, thank you. That's, I think, because of the different treatment in the different schools, I was getting a little bit confused.
Sure, sure. I think, yeah, I think for, for PA, that's quite difficult with the amount.
Yep. Yep. Okay, thank you.
I saw Gene looked like he was saying no. Wendy, do you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in. Kathy, I didn't, I just wanted to jump in. I ended up with Kathy was able to get back on or not. At Hill, we're temp screening all the kiddos, but we're not asking them all of the questions, which is why this part is really important for us. Because to be able to ask our littles these questions, we're not going to get accurate information. So we're going to do the temp check for all of them and then this would, would jump in to really get that secondary piece for us.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Well, thank you all for being here again. We appreciate all the information. We appreciate all the work that you've put in getting ready for the school year. And I hope that everything goes smoothly for you. So with that, we have kind of bounced around quite a bit tonight. So we're going to move back to agenda item 3B, agenda review. I'm going to step through this thing a little bit and kind of make some notes on what we haven't hit yet. So we haven't done consent agenda and I think that's the gifts and donations also. So C and D, I think that's it for number three. We've hit all the big ones. And then I think we have pretty much all of four to do, though we've already talked a little bit about transportation. We've got A, we still have the board reports and we've got some policy stuff. So is, do any other board members have any questions about the agenda moving forward?
Andy, this is Anne. I just have two questions. If I wasn't sure if it was going to be discussed tonight, but we were talking about the sports waiver that was going to be updated. I wasn't sure where to find that. And then also at the 8/11 meeting, we authorized $15,000 for the upgrade of the bandwidth at Hill and I wanted to see how that was going.
Sure. Let's see. So we'll throw the bandwidth thing under school reopening somewhere. I guess we'll just add a bullet under A. So under 4A or 8 bandwidth. And then I don't see sports on here, so we'll just, we'll put another bullet point for sports and see. We can talk about the waiver and anything else that they might want to share about sports with us.
Thank you.
Any other agenda review items? Oh, I have one. I don't think it got a motion after we came out in non-public. I reminded us to and then I don't think we did that, Patty.
This is Amy. Andy, I'd like to make a motion if you're ready now.
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff request for tuition waiver.
Thank you.
This is April. I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. So on a roll call vote, we'll start with Gene this time.
Yes.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a S. Thank you. Okay, so now we will step through this agenda, um, somewhat in order here. So I think we are on three C, gifts and donations.
Still zero.
Okay, and consent agenda?
That was the item you just voted on.
All right, so we are done with three C and three D. So we'll move on to agenda item number four, continuing business. Um, letter A, we are, we've got some topics under school reopening. Um, so.
Andy, this is, could I just ask a quick question? I apologize. Under donations. Um, there was, um, pals doing donations for PPE. Would that information be addressed or has that already been addressed?
I didn't have that information.
Okay. I know that they were doing a drive. I don't know. I, and do you know if anybody's actually made a donation up to this point?
I think Kofflin does, yeah. So I, personally, I've worked with Jen, who's the new secretary at the Hill School on what was going to be allowed for the PP donations, but we haven't physically received that, which is why you probably haven't heard about that to this point.
Thank you.
Andy, this is April. Um, I have a question for Mr. Kofflin regarding a PPE donation. Um, in a previous meeting, it was stated that it would, it, I asked if parents could donate, um, things such as hand sanitizer, and what we heard is it would be, um, a lot of work to keep the MSDS sheets updated. So I'm curious when, um, materials are being donated. Um, kind of what kind of work is on Mr. Kofflin and how he will manage that?
So anything that would come into, to the buildings through my end, um, I would update the SDS sheet to make sure we're in compliance on those ends. Um, we just, we, we tried to work with pals to, you know, give a couple hand sanitizers that we already have in it, uh, maybe give a couple wipes that we already have it, have in the SDS, et cetera. With that, it's not, it's not going to happen that only those things come in. So we would do everything in our power to make sure we're utilizing what we're getting, as long as it's an applicable product.
Okay, thank you. But you did share some suggestions of what you know works that you already have on there. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right. All right. So, um, agenda item for A, first bullet point is decision-making matrix, which was shared in the drive. Um, so I'll turn it over to Patty if you want to go through that quick.
Sure. So I updated the matrix, and I also tried to, um, highlight it to help you sort of have a visual on where we're at. Um, hopefully it's not too much color for you. On the first level, um, of community spread with Merrimack County, um, at 1.7 per 100,000, that's still in the hybrid range. Um, and then the town of Pembroke is at zero, so I added the green highlight because Pembroke alone is in the full return phase. And then the next, um, Pembroke School still remains a zero, which is in the full return, um, stage. So, um, staff absenteeism, I have highlighted in the hybrid section. Not sure this matrix didn't lend itself well to the, the information that I wanted to share with you, and that is that we're still having a little bit, we're working through some staff leave requests. So whenever we can accommodate, um, a staff leave with the option to do remote teaching, we have done that to try to make it all work and minimize the number of substitutes that we, um, would have to hire. We're still working out a couple of things, but we are running into, um, some pretty significant, uh, snags, which we've mentioned in the past at Pembroke Academy, because those parents who chose remote, um, students at the high school are in very specialized classes, classes with certifications that are held by only specific teachers like an AP Calculus or an AP, um, Physics class. Not any teacher, math teacher is qualified to teach that class. So we're at the point where we may have to talk to some parents about, um, finding another option. Our teachers have been great up until this point to try to accommodate. We just came back in full. Um, they're trying to make those accommodations and, and do both jobs, but that is really asking them to do, um, dual duty. So we're trying to work through some of that, but we may be at the point where, um, we either ask parents to have their student come in and join us for those specific classes, or they can re-sign up for V-Lax, because you may or may not have heard that V-Lax just received an additional $7 million. And they are hoping to address the waiting list and get some more staff on board by mid-October. So that may open up some opportunities for our high school students that haven't been there up until this point. So that's why I wasn't really sure how to represent that on this matrix, and that's why you'll see in the hybrid range, um, the staff absenteeism. So it's not necessarily that they're absent from school, it's just having difficulty with some coverage with staff. And then the next three areas are, um, we're fine, and that's in the full return. Um, on the second page with the data, we had a shift, um, in the counties. So all but two of our counties are now in the yellow range, and Sullivan and Co. are the only two counties that are now in the green range. So I think that's it for the updated information.
Thanks. Um, I have one quick question. Um, I guess not really a question, more of a statement. Um, maybe somewhere in here at this point, uh, we need to capture bus stuff too, and that's, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that going full return would exacerbate the bus issue even further, correct?
Yes, I, it's funny that you mentioned that. I actually was looking at the matrix today and, and said, well, that's certainly a factor that we didn't, um, input in here in the list and the needs to go in, because clearly, um, getting our students to school is an issue.
Yep. Um, board members, uh, questions about the matrix or where we're at, or, um, how it works or changes or anything?
Andy, this is April. Um, one thought just occurred to me as, um, our superintendent was speaking about, uh, staffing issues, particularly at PA. I'd like more information about, um, I know that sometimes students can dual enroll. Have a course, they may be able to get that course at a community college at public expense. So I would like to hear more about that, because I know that can sometimes be an option as well as V-Lax. Thanks.
I can talk about that. Uh, that actually generates a similar issue to our AP courses. The reason for that is, um, when we partner with a local high, uh, institution of higher ed, like NHTI or Southern New Hampshire, they have qualifications that our teachers need to meet, uh, in order to be able to award credit. Uh, which is actually very similar to what the college board is looking for to designate teachers for AP to, uh, to teach an AP course. So it generates similar issues in that we do offer, uh, some courses in which we are partnering with, uh, local areas or local institutions of higher ed. But those teachers need very specific qualifications and approval from those institutions in order to do that.
This is April, just to follow up. Um, not specific to AP, but let's, I don't know what courses are, you know, need to be filled or whatnot, but let's say it's an algebra course. What would hinder a student from taking an algebra course at a community college and having that credit applied to their high school experience?
Uh, well, um, I think part of it may be scheduling. Um, you know, I mean, they could, they could do that. Um, but I would also think that at this point, families are, um, you know, where a lot of community colleges have already started their terms, and that would generate a scheduling issue, um, where they may not have rolling enrollment. Um, you know, there may be some online solutions for some, um, colleges that are doing that. Uh, but you know, there would also be a cost associated with that for parents.
Uh, this is April again. If, um, there's a class that, and, and I'm going to focus this to Andy and let him do it wherever he would like. But if there's a class that is typically offered, and we just don't have the staff to offer it, um, what would be the means for the parents or the students to approach to try to remediate that issue so the child is getting, um, a public education at public expense?
Um, I guess, uh, uh, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I think that, um, I think I would leave that one to Patty. I don't, I don't know how far the appropriate education thing stretches. So I, my assumption at this point, and anybody from school, correct me if I'm wrong here, um, there are certain things that every student has to have, and it sounds like those things are, are being taken care of. Whereas somebody who, you know, may have a lot of their credits already finished at the beginning of their senior year and needs, and wants to take sort of extra things, AP classes or physics classes that may only attract four students or things like that, may have to find other alternatives, because we may not be able to, to staff those classes. Um, I don't, I don't know where the responsibility lies to provide every class that every student could possibly want. Um, and I don't know where the line is between, you know, what we normally offer versus what we can offer right now either. Yeah, uh, if somebody, if somebody from school wants to say that more eloquently.
Sure. I, I think that we, we've done our best, and I think the staff, the administration have gone above and beyond trying to, to make every option work for every student. Um, we are offering a free and appropriate public education to every student. Um, that may not include every option. Um, I don't believe that we would be called on the carpet for denying a student an education because we can't accommodate specific classes that they are interested in taking or needing to take. Um, we can offer, you know, the options that we've been discussing right along, and I believe the document asks us to be flexible when, and offer options when possible. And I believe that we've done that to the best of our ability, and we haven't given up yet. But I'm not sure that we're going to be able to accommodate every single class for every single student.
Andy, this is April. That doesn't really answer my question, and I'm not, um, asking about every single class, but if it's a class that has, you know, has been on the roster before, and we cannot accommodate that because of current situation. What I'm looking for is I would hope that if someone wants to bring that forward, what is that chain to make the request for, um, you know, for the school district to pay for that class? What I'm not hearing that, and that is something that I believe I would really like to hear, if we're not able to provide what we're typically able to. Um, kind of, what would that chain of command be? Thank you.
I can answer that to a certain extent, uh, Andy, if you'd like.
Sure.
Um, so in the past, when we have had a student that's wanted to look at a different class, um, the first step would be to look at V-Lax. And given all of the context that we're experiencing right now, V-Lax is, uh, limited as to what we can do. And if I can add another issue, um, just in terms of timing, you know, in the summer, we, we told, uh, parents that they could choose from a number of different options to include full remote. And if we can't offer that because our staff can't provide a simultaneous remote option and an in-person option, which the state guidance document says they can only do that short-term, they can't do it, it can't be a long-term solution. Then we've created a situation for these parents where they thought they had that solution. V-Lax has now filled up to a point where it has generated a lot of inflexibility for them, and now we don't know what to do.
A, as far as the chain of command, um, is it fair to say that that would go to you as the building principal and, and maybe Ms. Parkinson as a, as the, um, sorry.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That, you're welcome. So it goes from the, the student works with the, uh, school counselor, the school counselor facilitates that with, um, the director of curriculum. And there's an approval process to use like a, a course that's substituted, and in a traditional year, that is typically done through V-Lax. But it has, it has also been done in, uh, like an extended learning opportunity, and we've done that before.
Great. Other questions about the matrix? Um, I'll throw this in there. I, and I, I really don't want to talk about this tonight, but I just want to put it on everybody's minds. Um, we did, so today, or, yeah, today marks our first day of hybrid learning. Our motion from a month or so ago at this point said that we were going to do two weeks of remote, and then at least four weeks of hybrid. Um, so next meeting, I think we have to have a serious conversation about what happens after that. Um, I think we'll have some good information from our administrators at that time. They'll have two weeks of school under their belt. Um, but at that point, we'll only have two weeks left before that four-week hybrid period is expired, and, and we have to make some sort of decision on that. So, um, everybody needs to think a lot about that between now and at our next meeting. Yes, Amy?
Andy, can we just agree to be more explicit that we would like a recommendation from the superintendent, obviously informed by the principals and other staff of what they think ought to happen?
I'm absolutely in favor of that. In fact, um, I would say next, next week, uh, um, either during this discussion or at board report, or, um, sorry, principal report time or whatever, I would like to hear from, um, each of our principals on, on their opinion moving forward, and I would hope that that takes into account a lot of opinions from their staff between now and then as well.
Thank you.
Um, all right, and last call for questions on the matrix before we move on.
This is April again. I just want to say thank you. It's very helpful to see this and, and kind of have it color-coded on where we currently are. So I want to give my thanks for that work.
Agreed. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next bullet point, which is transportation. We've talked about that quite a bit earlier. Amber, is there anything that you would like to add?
Uh, oh, not unless we have any other questions.
Okay. Um, I, I'm okay with that. We spent a lot of time on that topic tonight, and sounds like there's still work to be done, but it sounds like everybody's working on it. So uh, you're still up, though. How about food service?
Sure. Um, so as we discussed at a previous board meeting, um, while we were remote, um, we would have any student that needed to obtain a meal, um, we would provide transportation for that meal. So Dale was able to do that. We did have a few hiccups, um, especially in the, the first couple runs, um, but I think towards the end of it, um, we were able to, um, become a little, and being sure that students obtained the meals that they needed. Those meals were pre-ordered, so we did know where they were going. Um, our food service director handled that portion. Now that we are, um, going back hybrid, or we are hybrid now, um, what, what the food service is doing is they're bagging up meals and providing three meals on Monday and two meals on Thursday that can be picked up at the end of the day at Pembroke Academy. So because of the bus situation that we're in, we felt like we were already spread too thin with busing that we could not provide transportation for those meals, as that just kind of exacerbates the issues that we already have. Um, so, uh, working with food service, they've come up with a plan to bag the meals. Um, we reached out to the students that have pre-ordered those meals so that they know where and when to pick those meals up. For those students that are remaining remote, meals will still be available, and our food service director has reached out to those individuals and have worked up a plan for them to pick those up as well.
Great, thank you. Um, questions for Amber about food service?
Andy, uh, this is Ann, and I didn't have a chance to unmute myself, but when you were discussing transportation, is there a way that we would be able to get the amount that we are paying monthly or basically for the buses that we can use to see what we would be savings, um, saving, what the savings would be?
I, I think it would be helpful to go through at least a few weeks or a month so that we can get a full month billing before we have that, um, just because there could be changes between now and the, that billing cycle. Um, so I think it'd be more suited to at least get one bill cycle through so that I can kind of see how that's working.
Is that a bi-weekly or a monthly, or how does that?
It would bill monthly.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions about transportation or food service?
Andy, this is April, just to clarify a question. Um, I did hear about pickup at PA of those meals because of the existing transportation issue. Um, I'm just curious, um, have there been any kind of notifications that some students or families may have transportation issues? I'm just curious, have there been any kind of notifications that some students or families may have transportation issues and cannot get to the school to pick up those meals and what would happen if, if we were notified that there were transportation issues for students?
As of now, the students that have, um, that are fully remote, it, it is minimal. There are only a little more than a handful that have requested meals at this time. Those in particular families that have chosen to receive meals have not had issues. Should we come across somebody that might have an issue, we definitely, I mean, we'll have to work through that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Others? All right. Thank you. Um, so the last thing on 4A is staffing. Patty, you've touched on it, but if you want to go into that one.
I think I jumped ahead of myself and covered all the, all the items that I wanted to update you on under that.
Okay. Does anybody have questions about that?
Andy, this is Ann. So did we have any issues that we, because today was the first day of hybrid that we had to bring in any staffing substitutes?
Could we ask the principals to answer that question? I don't want to make assumptions.
Sure. Uh, we'll start with Ms. Gary.
No, we did not have to bring anybody in. We have a few people that are working as far as remote or things that we've accommodated for childcare or ADA issues, but other than that, we've not had to have any, have anybody in for substitute.
Okay, John?
We did have one staff that we needed to sub for and we cannot find subs.
Uh, we had two subs in the building, one for a staff member who was sick and the others to fill on a temporary basis to fill for a staff member who retired rather than coming back.
Thank you.
Andy, can I just ask a question? How, um, what happened to that class that we weren't able to find a sub for?
Yeah, we rotate staff throughout the day into that, into that position, typically. Frankly, everybody we can throw at it. Uh, this is going to be an ongoing problem all year. There just, there's no subs out there. Um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty major issue.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
You're welcome.
All right. If there's no other questions on that, we will move to 4B board reports. And any SAU board or exec board stuff?
Yes, we did have a meeting last week and we will have a meeting next week. We were given the budget and they discussed some of the items on the budget. It is going up 3.49% from last year. And we will have a, a meeting next week.
You say 3.49, Ann?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, um, AREA committee?
Um, Andy, this is Amy. I actually had a question on Ann's report.
Sure.
My own understanding. The SAU board and the SAU executive board are two different groups of people, right? And I think that Ann was reporting on the SAU executive board meetings.
Yes, the SAU board only meets twice a year. That's the one that we did a few weeks ago. So generally, there's going to be nothing to report on that one. In fact, I think the agenda just used to say SAU exec board. I don't think it said, used to say SAU board on it. But yeah, so Ann is our representative to the executive board. So that, yeah.
Okay. Um, I have, uh, some comments from the AREA meeting and I thought that I had them on my screen all ready to go, but I don't. Um, can you circle back to me, please?
Sure thing, but if I forget, just throw a shoe at me. We'll go to budget committee. Nothing more to report on that since last time when Jean and I missed the meeting because we were at the SAU meeting, but there is, there is a meeting, an NBC meeting this Thursday. Um, and we did just get the final CPA report or CIP report, sorry. Um, I haven't had a chance to go through it all yet. But I will do that and I've got a, and there's, like I said, there's an NBC meeting on Thursday. So the next time we meet, I should have some stuff to share. Any questions about budget committee before I move on?
Andy, I'm ready when you are on a AREA.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so we met on September 8th and it is, uh, there were some overwhelming, uh, feelings, positions that the Pembroke School Board should have had all of their members there. We have three members on the Pembroke School Board that are members in the AREA board committee and we only had one person in attendance and that coupled with, um, lingering negative feelings about the fact that the Pembroke School Board voted to open Pembroke Academy remotely without consulting with the sending schools that send students to Pembroke Academy. Really made clear to me, uh, that the AREA group has some, in my opinion, legitimate concerns about the Pembroke School Board working more cooperatively with the sending school districts limited to issues of Pembroke Academy. So that was sort of like the overriding gist that came out of the meeting. Allentown School Board made it clear that they are very serious about revising the AREA agreement to bring it up to date. As many of you know, I'm probably going to get both of these numbers wrong, but it's something like a four-page, you know, typewriter types document from like 1968 or something like that. They made it clear that they have met with legal counsel to ask questions about their rights and obligations and options under the AREA agreement. There was sort of consensus amongst all the other school boards represented on the AREA that, um, all decisions involving the Pembroke Academy community, and I'll talk about what that means in a second. Should go to all of the boards, that there should be some sort of cooperative consultation process. Uh, part of that communication or part of that conversation was clarifying that the Pembroke Academy community is not limited to just the, um, households that have students in Pembroke Academy. Because the operation of Pembroke Academy also affects all of the taxpayers in all of the sending schools as well as in Pembroke. So the Pembroke Academy community really was meant to mean all of the towns of the sending schools as well as Pembroke. And there was definitely an acknowledgement that the way the AREA agreement is written that the Pembroke School District governs Pembroke Academy. But that doesn't mean that the Pembroke School District can't be more communicative and more, um, engaged in more of an iterative process with the other school boards. There was, it was helpful for me because, um, there were some concrete examples of things that had happened in the past where the other sending school districts felt that they would have liked to have some input before it happened. And some of those examples were, um, again, you know, forgive me if I'm getting some of this wrong, but I guess the horticulture program was cut at Pembroke Academy. Um, and these are not recent. These are, this is sort of like a litany in history time. Special projects at Pembroke Academy that have a fiscal impact going forward without, you know, again, that input from the other school districts. The Innovation Academy, which I think is a newer thing, which, and again, it's not like they're against the Innovation Academy. It's just that you know, they're receiving news and what is perceived as like a top-down fashion. Without any input. And then of course, the school reopening plan for Pembroke Academy. So we brainstormed some very easy, low-hanging fruit to improve some of the communications. Those items included having, uh, first of all, I let everybody at that meeting know. And then I asked them to let all their people know that these school, the Pembroke School District, Pembroke School Board meetings are now, um, remote, which means that they're way more accessible than they used to be. People can dial in, people can zoom or not, what are we using here? We, you can WebEx in. And so that, we should spread the word about that so that people, you know, if they want to have more of a say in what's happening at Pembroke Academy, they can participate in the Pembroke School District, school board meetings. We talked about the absence of long-term strategic plans, you know, either a one, a three or a five-year strategic plan for Pembroke Academy and potentially that being something that everybody could work on. There was acknowledgement that a pandemic is not the right time to do that and that that's a super long-term goal. That the, let's see here. We talked about how during these meetings, we receive an oral report from all of the principals about, you know, latest and greatest news at, from each of the schools. And there was a request for the headmaster from PA to put that into writing, which I suspect he kind of has notes about that anyway. And I, you know, I speculated out loud that maybe, although I wasn't sure, it wouldn't be that big of a lift to get those, you know, into writing, into the minutes. And then that would be a channel of communication for folks to have regular updates about Pembroke Academy. We thought we could, um, distribute the agenda for these meetings into the shared drive for the AREA, uh, folder. You know, again, we already have the agenda, so it's just putting it in an additional place so people can see, for example, like, oh my gosh, they might cut sports for the 2020 year, you know, I should make sure my school district shows up. And just two more here. So two more items here. That was the list of ways we could improve communication sort of right off the bat in ways that might be easy. On September 29th, there's going to be a meeting to discuss who, when, how to have Pembroke Academy go back to full person. Acknowledging that that decision lies with this board. We all thought it would be helpful for that group to have that discussions that we could provide input before this board makes a final decision about that topic. Um, and then we're going to plan to meet at the regularly scheduled November meeting, which I don't have the day of the month there, but um, I think it's already, it's been decided a long time since. The 9:29 meeting is a new meeting. It's at 6:00 PM. It's at the Pembroke Academy Cafe. Specifically for purposes of reopening Pembroke Academy to potentially, you know, full-time. But the November meeting is the regularly scheduled meeting and we're going to focus during that meeting on opening up the AREA agreement. That's everything.
Well, congratulations, Amy, on setting a new record for a board report. I appreciate all the information. I've got a couple of thoughts and I'm going to try to be succinct and tactful, but I don't know if it'll come out that way. I, I agree with the sentiments of the other boards that are being shared. Um, I, I understand their desire to be more involved. I understand their frustration with certain decisions in the past, especially the reopening decision. Especially since, you know, we all did meet together and closed the schools. Um, that, that was a whole lot easier decision than opening was. Um, but I completely understand their perspective of wanting to be involved in these things. Uh, I have, I struggle with it in a logistical fashion. We have been criticized in the past for being reactive, being slow, not getting information into the hands of parents and stakeholders in a timely manner. Um, I'm assuming that they're not asking for this sort of thing for every little decision that needs to be made. Um, but I think that's going to have to be a fairly clear line in the sand on what stuff they want to be involved with and what stuff they don't because otherwise I can just see this adding weeks and weeks and weeks to us being able to make decisions about the school that ultimately, as you said, we are responsible for. So I'm certainly sympathetic to their, their desires and I want to do everything that I can um, to make that happen. Like you mentioned, I, I took a note here. Um, I was going to say it and then you said it. Our meetings are open. Our meetings are now live streamed, so, or, or, you know, interactive, whatever you want to call it, they're in real time. So I would encourage all of them to attend. I certainly don't have a problem distributing the agenda to more places, but the agenda is available to everyone in the whole world in the place that we post it right now. Um, so anybody that wants to get the agenda can get the agenda. I appreciate that there's a meeting set up to talk about going full in person. I'm a little concerned that it's as late as it is, but I guess that's still kind of in the two and a half week timeframe. So, so that's cool. And I appreciate you attending. Um, I know, I think that our other board members had kind of said that this was a, a last minute decision by whoever set it up, that it was going to be for a certain night and there was no flexibility. So, um, that's something that should be worked out in the future to make sure that we can come to mutually agreed upon meeting times so that we can attend.
Andy, I should have said, um, it was election day. And I, I agree with the sentiment that we should not be having meetings, any other meetings on an election day aside from getting the election done. The response to that at the AREA meeting was, well, are you really telling me that all the other board members except Amy couldn't come and cover for the board members that couldn't make it? And so I think in the future, this board can do a better job. Like a lot of times I hear, um, Jean and Andy handing off on budget stuff. Like I can't go, can you go? You know, I think we just need to do a little bit more coordination there to get ideally three, but hopefully two of us at these meetings.
Sure. And I think as many of us that can possibly go is fantastic. And like I said, I, I don't mean to sound complainy. Um, I certainly want to work with those other boards. They send their kids here. They have every right to be concerned with the goings-on of Pembroke Academy. Um, like I said, my, my main concern is just how that looks logistically. Um, and then even, you know, like they said, bringing the communities into it, I completely understand that people pay taxes and that's what funds the school. Hundred percent. But you know, there's, there's a line there too, even within Pembroke. We can't pass every decision that's going to be made through the taxpayers first. It, it'd be great if there was a mechanism to actually do that. And we could just say, hey, everybody on Monday morning, go vote on whether or not you want this program. Well, I don't know if that'd be good or not, but, but you get the idea. I mean, logistically, it's, we need to strike a balance here where we can get those other schools. The representation they feel that they need, but still be able to do our job and take care of our school in a, in an efficient manner.
Yeah, I think everybody would agree with that, the way you just said that, Andy. Um, I think we should also invite Patty if she wants to add anything from that meeting. I'd love to hear her thoughts too.
Sure.
I think you did a great job with the summary. Um, I think it was a record. I guess the only, the only thing I would add and like Andy certainly not trying to sound like it's complaining, but I just, I would caution people to do some fact checking also when, you know, when things are being kind of put out there. Pembroke Academy did an extraordinary job talking about Innovation Academy. They've been talking about it for at least two years. Lots of presentations. Um, it was talked about at an AREA meeting a couple of years ago. So I just, I don't, I don't want Dan, especially in his team, to feel like they're kind of put on the spot for doing things and not informing people when that may not be the case. So I just want to be careful that I want to hear what they have to say. I want to respond to it. I want to respect it. Um, but I also just want to make sure that, you know, just because people missed meetings doesn't mean that things weren't shared and talked about. And I think that, um, we'll certainly work on that. Um, I'll work on it with Dan to make sure we're bringing things, um, to people's attentions in the future, but I, I don't, I just want to make sure that people are aware that that hap, that did happen.
Thanks. Um, other board members, questions for Amy about the AREA meeting?
Andy, this is Ann.
Sure.
And at our last Pembroke School Board meeting, it was discussed that April was not going to be able to attend. Um, I have discussed since the beginning, uh, back in March on what day's election day is. I, um, CC, uh, excuse me, I emailed Kathy numerous times on why nine eight would not be a night that I would be able to attend. a night that I would be able to attend. We also had quite a few people at elections to come in, so a meeting on election evening is not. We did have a lot of discussion about we, why we would not be able to attend that meeting. As a select person, I'm there from 6:30 in the morning until the next election. I'll be there till 2:00 in the morning. So we do try to cover this basis. With the other districts telling us that, you know, they're going to have discussions about opening the area agreement, just like putting the SAU budget on the ballot and to get agreed to, every single district has to agree. So did Allenstown say that they were going to be putting this area agreement on their warrant article in March of 2021?
No, they didn't say that at all. No, this is, everybody acknowledges that if the AREA agreement were to be revised, that it's a years-long process. The very first step hasn't even been taken, which would be forming a committee under the state RSA. So no, they didn't, absolutely didn't say that. What they did say very clearly is that they are serious about pushing forward with exploring, improving the AREA agreement.
Yes, and that's, that's, you know, in, in all their rights. But even if Allenstown agrees to it, all the other districts have to agree to also. So it, it isn't a quick fix for them. And I do get their understanding because they even said in our all SAU meeting that they need to have more input. And I believe Patty, you could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the last, what do they call that? A, not a lien, but when we go and have our.
If there's a bond open?
Yeah, is it 2036? That the group, that, that if there's a bond open on Pembroke Academy, then the area agreement can't be changed. And I believe it was 2036.
Amber, do you remember that? I don't remember that.
Off the top of my head, I don't. I'm sorry.
I, I know it was mentioned. It is out there quite a way. Long time in the future, but I think that also in the area agreement, it's allowed that if town wants to address it or leave the agreement, that they can, so long that they fulfill their financial obligation to the district. So, you know, there is that, but.
Yeah, and I can understand their frustration, but it, it is going to be a very long, lengthy process for them. And I apologize, on page 86 of our budget, I believe it's 2025 for a lien, but it doesn't say what building, but then we do have a July 1st of 2035 on page 85. So, you know, there's a lot of information there, but I appreciate Amy telling us that there's a meeting on the 29th. Is that in person?
Yes, it says the PA Cafe.
Excellent. Thank you. I just added it to my calendar.
Thanks, Ann.
Was that November 29th?
I took it.
No, September.
Oh, September 29th.
Great. Thanks again, Amy. I think we left off on pace.
I just wanna say one thing, and I'll probably be a lot less tactful than you were. We did not consult anyone when we made our initial decision to reopen remotely. That's on us. We didn't think far enough ahead that it's going to impact these other towns. And then again, we received a letter further on, I think after our second decision to open up two weeks remotely and then go hybrid. Again, we did not consult the other area schools. But they, I think we were mainly focused on getting schools open. We were not thinking outside of that. That's not an excuse we should have, but it doesn't preclude them from reaching out to us during this process and saying, hey, let's have a meeting. Let's discuss this, how we're going to move forward as an, you know, as, as an area, as the SAU, whatever the case may be. So not consulting them wasn't the right thing to do, but the blame does not alone lay on, on, on Pembroke School District, Pembroke School Board. And, you know, in, in, in some ways, the letter that we received could be construed as a meeting that we were not invited to also, being signed by all the school boards in the AREA. So that being said, there is some communication work we need to, we need to do between all of us, but it is between all of us. It's not just on, it's not just on the Pembroke School Board and the Pembroke School District.
Thanks.
Andy, this is Ann, and I wanted to find out if we could get some legal guidance before the 29th of, of September concerning the opening of the area agreement? If that was an email that we can ask our legal counsel?
Um, I think.
If we're going to that meeting, we're, we're informed.
Did I, maybe I'm misunderstanding this. Amy, I think the meeting on the 29th is about reopening the schools, right?
That is correct.
They're just gonna discuss the AREA agreement at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is in November, November 10th, maybe?
I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to confirm the date right now, but it is in November. Yeah, April's saying 10th, Andy's saying 10th. Let's go with the 10th.
I only said 10th because I saw Amber do that last time.
Okay, okay.
And I hate to say that's another election day. So I'm, can I just clarify, on September 29th, is an area agreement a meeting? Or is it an SAU full board?
It's an area committee meeting, not to discuss the area agreement. It's only that because if it were an SAU meeting, then Deerfield would be there, but Deerfield's not part of the AREA agreement.
Okay. So again, can I ask for some legal counsel concerning, about opening up the, the document? Just so Amy and I can be informed going into that meeting?
Andy, this is April. I would echo Ann's request. We need to keep in mind that the most senior member of our board is just beginning the third year of the term. We have members on these other boards who have served much longer than we have and have much more knowledge regarding this AREA agreement than we do. It would be helpful to have legal counsel as we continue down the road.
Yeah, I think, uh, go ahead, Amy.
Andy, I think it's premature to seek legal counsel. I think two important reasons. Number one, because there are a boatload of legal issues associated with this agreement. And we don't even know enough right now to ask a specific question that we want answered. A lawyer can't really respond to just like, you know, give us some advice about the agreement or give us some advice about our options in the agreement. You know, the, those are, those questions are too broad. Number two, because we, I believe that we should leave aside for now sort of like lawyering up and coming to the table with like a defensive position, knowing, you know, every single nook and cranny of our rights to move forward. You know, for example, I wouldn't want to engage in a legal argument about whether or whether or not the AREA agreement is actually terminated. Because by its own terms, it is terminated, but by the party's course of conduct, we have extended it. And that's just not a fruitful discussion to have if everybody comes to the table with an agreement that we want to improve the agreement. And so I think we should focus on that kind of question first, like conceptually. Do we want to try to improve this or not? And not get bogged down in the legalities.
Right. Well, and I think that, I think the part I agree with the most, well, I agree with everything you said, but I think to me, the point that stuck out was we can't ask legal a question if we don't have a question. So I guess I would say, Ann, April, Jean, anybody, if you've, if you've got specific questions you would like answered before that meeting, please send them to me. I'll make sure they get to Patty. And I mean, what, a question that I have that I think would be now, good knowledge to have, that I've heard rumor, I've heard other board members say, but I've never read it for myself, is what is the criteria for the area agreement to be open? As I understand it, it's all the towns agreeing, plus there not being a, a bond on one of the properties like Ann said. But I don't know 100% for sure if that's true. So that's something that I'll put in writing and ask Patty to get answered. And if Patty can answer it, or if Amber can answer it, or if somebody that we don't pay $200 an hour can answer it, great. If they can't, I'd still like the answer. And if asked to get sent off to Dean or something, then we can do that. So I guess I would just ask if, if, if you have something that you would like legal to answer before that meeting, please send it to me, very specific question in writing, and I will get it, I will get it answered for you. But I, I agree with Amy. I don't, I don't think that we can generalize and just say to our attorneys, say, hey, you know, tell us about this thing, because I, I just think we have to be more specific with what, what we're asking them.
This is April, and I would just like to clarify something. My intent in asking for legal counsel is not so to lawyer up. And I'm saying that just for pub, for public consumption. I'm asking because I want to be informed. I'm on this board. You're not an attorney. I mean, Amy's the only one of us who is an attorney, and she has made it very clear to me, to, not me, but to the board, that she is here to act as a board member and not as the board's attorney. And I appreciate that she has that knowledge and she shares with us what she knows. But at the end of the day, the person who can really interpret that document is an attorney. And that's why I request that. I want to get away from the hearsay and I want to be informed. And that's why it's not a threat to, for me, it's just about being informed to make sure what's going on, what I'm saying, what's believed. Like we've said, there's a lot of hearsay. Let's get to the bottom of what the truth is. Thank you.
Andy?
Yes.
Um, I just want to let the board know that I do have a lot of information from when this committee was active, probably two or three years ago. I have copies of the statute that talks specifically about the AREA agreements. And I also have some information in minutes that would probably be helpful. So I can put all of that in the drive so that at least you have a starting place to, to do some reading, if that helps. And it's free.
That would be fantastic. If you could put it in a folder marked AREA agreement so that I can keep it straight in my brain, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Exactly, Andy, and thank you very much, Patty. And for asking for legal counsel is exactly it. We weren't going to get legal counsel on the phone and say, hey, explain to us what the area agreement is. There's specific questions that we need to find out. And it, a lot of this is hearsay down the way down from Clint Hanson from 20, 30 years ago. This is a lot of information that we need to know going in. Anybody going into any meeting, you want to be informed of what you're walking into. So we're not saying, hey, we're going to sue this one or we want legal counsel for that. We just want information of what we're walking into.
Sure. I think that's fair. So, uh, yeah, Patty, if you, I, I hate to ask you to do anything as quickly as you can, but if you can get us the stuff that you have sooner rather than later, that'd be great. And then we can all read through it. And then if we have further questions, we can, we can work our way to get those answered before that meeting so we can all feel comfortable. Okay, so we kind of got bogged down on that one, but I think it was a good discussion. I think we're on pace report, Jean.
No contact with them whatsoever. I did contact, I can't remember her name now, to get me on an email list because I, I've got nothing. I've got no scheduled meetings or anything like that. And I believe there was one not too long ago. I thought Amy might have men, mentioned it. Is that possible?
What did I mention?
A pace, a pace meeting?
Oh, yes, there was a pace meeting.
Did you know?
Yeah, I did. Let me see my notes here. Hold on. It's not going to be as long. Okay, my notes from that meeting weren't as good. I did do a recap, Jean, at the last board meeting, I think, when my memory of the pace meeting was fresher. So I think we can just refer to the minutes from last meeting.
Yeah, if there's not been one since, since last time, that's, that's fine. So then, I do see a Kevin on the phone. Chris, could you unmute that, Kevin, and see if it happens to be Kevin Foss?
I don't see a name on the phone. Do you know which user that?
No, not on the phone. I'm sorry. There's a, there's a computer user listed as Kevin. I'm not.
Yeah, I can unmute him. Sorry. Kevin is unmuted.
Kevin Foss, does that happen to be you?
It is not Kevin Foss.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. So Kevin's not with us. I haven't, I haven't received a report about the Hill Renovation Committee at this point. I'm guessing that there's limited access to the buildings. Oh, Sandy's waving. See, I get reading this thing.
Thank you. The renovation committee, as reported at one of the earlier meetings, has not met since schools have started. We figured with the beginning of school, we needed a little bit of a break, but we are working on meeting towards the end of September and then we'll make a recommendation.
Great. Thank you very much. So we finally come to principal reports. I think you started with Wendy last time, so we'll start with Dan this time.
Okay, Pembroke Academy students in Cohort A, at least, were greeted this morning by staff waving signs and even our own Sparty mascot made an appearance, welcoming students back into Pembroke Academy. Things ran very smoothly throughout the building. I can tell you that our updated traffic patterns did help with congestion. We did reach pretty close to capacity in our cafeteria for one of our lunches, given our social distancing measures. So that, that may be a challenge for us to navigate, but it's something I think we can do. And quite frankly, students did a great job of social distancing and using their face coverings. And I was really impressed and am appreciative of their behavior today. I think that they did really well.
Great. It's nice to hear good news. Uh, Mr. Marsden? Oh, I'm sorry. Do there are questions for Mr. Morris? Okay, Mr. Marsden.
Yeah, we had our Group A also today. We didn't greet them with signs. We greeted them with thermometers. And we had, the kids were great. They, they came in and we had them enter a very different part of the building. So we had four entrances that we had them and we were able to do temperature checks really quickly. However, one would not, I, I think I've said it before, we, we don't know what we don't know. So who would have thought that thermometers didn't work that well in 40-degree weather? So we, we learned that really quickly this morning. And so tomorrow morning, we'll do that a little bit differently, but the, the kids were awesome. They all wore their masks unless they were eating or had their, their breaks or had a recess and they still were wearing them at a recess if they did not stay six feet apart. They were really responsible with it. I have to say that it was almost six months to the day that we had kids in the building. And it was really, really nice to finally see kids. Our lunches went very well. We have one class that we have to have an overflow, eat in the classroom, and that seemed to work well. And like I said, the kids were unbelievable. I do have to mention how, and I know I keep saying this, I guess, but staff having to plan for remote and then to go to hybrid and then possibly to in-person is incredible amount of work and a lot of unknown things. It's really hard to, teachers don't plan day-to-day. They plan at least week-to-week, if not further out. So under a lot of stress and a lot of things going on, staff have been remarkable as far as the amount of time and effort they're putting into plan for kids. And like I said, the kids were great today. With the exception of some of the busing issues that we, we have to work out, we cannot continue this. It was a really good day and it was great to have kids back and we're looking forward to our Group B tomorrow.
Thank you, Sandy.
Wendy got disconnected. I'm not sure she's back yet, but she is trying hard to get.
Okay. I thought so. I saw her name drop off.
Go off and come back.
Okay, questions for Mr. Marsden? Okay, Ms. Gary is having some connection problems at the moment, so. Okay, um, Ms. Gary is having some connection problems at the moment. So let's look at the.
She's on the phone.
And she's listening on this phone.
All right, um. I think I just unmuted her. Um, Wendy, is that you?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yay. Oh, I guess this is like, uh, uh, kind of what's been going on for us is dropped calls or dropped the internet. Um, so, um, uh, so going on at Hill today, we had, uh, it was an, actually, it was an amazing first day. Um, we were, uh, done with our parent pickup at eight o'clock on the dot. Um, and it was great to see all the smiling faces and, um, the staff was out there. The parents were great, and they were just very helpful and appreciative. We had some thermometers that decided they didn't want to work, and they were very patient while we worked through that. And then when the kids were in the building, it was pretty much just, you know, it's like riding a bike. You can just get on it, and you just know what to do. And, um, it was a really good feeling that came over the building with the kids in today. Um, a lot of the things that we were working through, food service was amazing. They had the breakfast ready, the lunches were delivered to the classroom. Um, all the protocols and procedures that we had put into place, or we had planned for, we were able to put into place. Um, you know, a few minor adjustments that we're going to look for tomorrow. And, and, um, I, I really want to give major kudos to the entire staff because with this busing issue, just to give you perspective, we met about our dismissal plan at one o'clock yesterday, and we really had to pull that, like, pull this all together last minute, and they just jumped in, ready to go. We got the kids out of the building safely on our end for, um, elementary, all of our kids, they need, you know, we have to take them out to the bus. It's not like you can just open the doors and they can all go. So it really does take a lot of effort to get everybody out there. So they just worked really hard today to make sure that that was all, um, pulled off and the kids got out there safely. Um, lots of smiling faces. The kids were excited to be back in the building. Um, so overall today, we had a really great first day, um, and we're excited for what we're calling, uh, first day 2.0 tomorrow for our next group coming in.
Great. Thank you. I just realized before I opened up for questions, um, nobody threw a shoe at me, but I forgot the, the extra bullet points that we added in for A. So since we've got you on the phone, uh, can you tell us a little bit about the impact of the bandwidth issue? And then if I could have Josh give us a quick update of Comcast and where that kind of sits?
Yeah, absolutely. So the last two weeks were, um, they were definitely the most challenging. As we said, um, we were only allowed to have about seven people on at a time. Um, and then this past week, they were able to do what we are calling our mini upgrade. So basically with the infrastructure that's already in the building, they were able to, um, up our, up, uh, up, increase our upload speed. Um, and we did, we had a crash the party internet kind of a thing where on Friday, we really tested what we could do, and we had all of our, as many staff members as we could get on. So we're up to about me having, uh, 20 on at a time. Um, and so now that we're in hybrid, that works out okay because we have our, our five remote teachers, our, uh, special, um, education department would need it outreach. They really don't need to be on a dedicated schedule anymore. We were on a very strict schedule. Um, we still do have issues at times where it will drop. If people are using, we have to space everybody out throughout the building. If they're using a certain port and too many of them are on it, it clogs it up. So that was some of the issues we experienced today, but those are like minor things that we can work through, um, until we eventually get to having our, what we are dubbing our big upgrade.
Awesome. Josh, is there anything you want to add to that? Okay. Um, questions, uh, questions for Wendy?
Uh, Andy, this is Ann. Um, thank you for bringing up the, um, the internet for the Hill. But, um, in the prior meetings that we discussed with Josh is that we were able to get children in the community who weren't able to connect to the internet, um, a hotspot. Is that something that we looked at for Hill?
Actually, yes. So one of the things we were brainstorming at that moment was, do we have the hotspots? Can we get all of the unused hotspots in our building? And they, I believe they just came in. I think we got an email today about it. So at the time when we were looking for that, um, Josh was trying to get them in because we had thought that would be a great way to help some of this out. Um, but we're kind of with our mini upgrade in an okay spot right now. Um, and then we do have the hotspots. I do believe that came in, but I think Josh can talk more to that.
Thank you. Any other questions at the elementary level?
Um, Andy, this is Ann, and I wanted to ask of all the principals, the parents have been knocking at my door, and they're concerned if we could just go over tonight the time for drop off, parent drop off for each of the school and the parent pickup time?
Um, do you guys have that stuff in front of you? Go ahead, Wendy.
Yep. Um, so our drop off starts at 7:40. Um, class starts at eight, but obviously with the buses coming in, we're not counting, uh, the kids tardy. And then our official dismissal is at 2:20.
Thank you.
Three Rivers, uh, the earliest, uh, drop off is 7:35. We entered the building approximately 7:45, and dismissal is 2:35.
Thank you.
Uh, Pembroke Academy, uh, drop off is recommended after 7:00 AM, uh, and our day ends at 2:20, and we're recommending that students that don't have sports or clubs, uh, leave campus as soon as possible.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
And congratulations on your first day.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for all of our principals? All right. Thank you very much. Um, as much as I hate to do, I do want to backtrack because somebody did ask me to add, um, uh, sports update is about the waiver. Um, Patty, is there anything that you can share with us about any progress in sports, any changes in sports or about the waiver?
Um, so the waiver was approved pending, um, Dean's additions, and we did get that. I gave them to Fred. He incorporated them into his sports waiver, and those have gone out successfully. Um, I don't, I haven't heard anything else about sports in general, uh, unless Dan has some updated information.
Uh, yeah, they're, um, I mean, they're progressing, they're following the waiver. Uh, there is a screening protocol that Fred does, uh, and his coaches do, um, every day. And in addition to that, they're still practicing face covering and social distancing, um, on their way to fields, on their way back from fields. Uh, and, you know, they're going through all the protocols that are outlined in that waiver.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, okay, um, I think that we can move on to agenda item number five, which is policy review. We've got a whole bunch of first readings. Um, we do have the audio video recording policy still on there from a while ago. Um, is anybody ready on any of these?
Andy, this is April. I would like to move to take from the table the motion to approve the New Hampshire School Board Association's version of policy EEAA, video and audio surveillance on school property.
Okay, so we had a tabled motion from the previous meeting. There's a motion to untable it.
This is Amy. I'll second that.
Thank you. Um, discussion?
Um, this is April. I know in the previous meeting, Amy had brought forth some concerns about desiring that there was a reference to, uh, records retention. And if I may, I'm just curious if Amy had a opportunity to look at our policy EHB records retention, and curious if that policy satisfied her concern, or if she still would like that reference in that policy.
Um, my, yeah, okay, yeah, I did look at that policy, April, and I would still prefer there to be a reference. Um, looking over the policy more clearly. I mean, I'm not going to vote no if we don't put in a cross-reference, but I do still continue to feel that the school board, um, association recommend version is too wishy washy and potentially inconsistent with the retention policy, where it says in the fourth paragraph, the district will retain copies of video recordings until they are erased, which may be accomplished by other deletion or copying. Um, the superintendent will consult with the necessary personnel to determine how and when such recordings shall be deleted. You know, I really love a sentence in there that says, um, you know, something like, uh, all retention of surveillance will be pursuant to, and then whatever the letters are in those policies. That's, you're so awesome at that, April, and I am the exact opposite.
Um, I would be willing to, if I need to do so, amend my motion, uh, to make sure that it does include a reference to policy EHB records retention. And, um, I think it would also be, um, helpful if we review the EHB policy, get that on our agenda. Well.
I'm on board with all of that, but I think that we need to vote on taking the, um, the motion off the table before we get into where we're going.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Um, let's go ahead and call that. So there's a motion and a second to take the, the discussion, or, um, sorry, take the, the motion from last time off the table in regards to the video recording policy. Um, on roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Um, Ann?
Yes.
Dean?
Yep.
Amy?
Yes.
And I M E S. Great. So, um, April, do you have the wording of the motion in front of you by any chance?
Um, I jotted the motion to what? To move it from the table?
Nope, the, that one's approved now. The original motion, I think just to approve.
I don't have the original one, but I'm pretty sure it's pretty close to, uh, a motion to approve the New Hampshire School Board Association's version of policy EEAA, video and audio surveillance on school property.
Okay, I thought that, that sounded right. Um, so, uh, I have a, a bit of a concern, and maybe Patty can shed some light on it. I, I seem to remember this policy, and I think that, I think that our legal department had some hand in this policy, and I'm worried about, um, going with the School Board Association, one, if our lawyer had some reason why. There, I'd be interested in, in his opinion on why that was not done in the first place. Um.
Sure.
I would just kind of trust that, but this is, I think, with remote learning, audio video is kind of a very important subject right now. So I'd like to hear.
Sure. So, um, the, I would, excuse me, I would want to consult Dean before moving forward with either revising the records retention policy or changing this policy, because when these laws were put in place, he did send us along his recommendations. And the specific paragraph, um, that April noticed wasn't in the NHSBA version was added because that was a law that was passed that you can't record in a classroom without both the teacher and student's permission. So instead of adopting a policy about that, um, Dean recommended just adding that into the audio video surveillance policy. So, you know, I'm happy to take whatever suggestions the board has, but I think that because it was, um, the result of new legislation, that we should probably run it by Dean again for a final review before it's finalized.
Okay, I think that clarifies. Go ahead, April.
Would we be able to have that input before our next meeting? Um, I think because of our current situation, this is kind of a hot policy we need to get put to bed.
I agree.
Sure. So let me just make sure I understand. I think what I'm hearing is that Amy would like the policy on records retention referenced in this policy, and we also want to make sure that our records retention policy sort of jives with this if we're going to reference it. And then I will also clarify the paragraph that's in there that's not in the School Board Association. Will that meet everyone's needs at this point?
This is Amy. From my perspective, yes.
April?
One moment. There was just an issue that I had found previously with the policy, so please come back to me, um, or I'll raise my hand. Thank you.
It meets my concerns. Ann or Jean?
I'm giving that.
Great. Thank you. Well, Angela's looking.
Again, I don't see the exact language, and I always like to, when I can find it, quote the exact language. Um, but my concern was that, um, there was some language up, oh, here it is, I found it. One, two, three, the paragraph down in the current policy states, students will be responsible for any violation of school rules caught on tape by cameras. Um, I believe it shouldn't be limited to students, that it should be all personnel, or all, you know, all persons, not limited to student. And that is one reason why I would like to see this policy changed sooner than later. Thank you.
I would agree with that change as well. Okay, um, so probably we need a motion to table this again, I assume, since it's open?
Motion to table?
Thank you. Um, I'll second. Is there other discussion around this one before we vote to table again?
Does it? Go ahead, Ann.
Uh, this is Ann. So my question is because we're tabling it because Patty had suggestions on some of the, uh, information in there we need from legal.
Right.
Thank you.
Others?
This is April. My concern with tabling it, we could always take this policy up again, is I don't want to leave any loopholes, um, for anyone. Um, we know we've had neighboring school districts that have had issues, and I really, if there's something that we see that we could take care of, even if we have to revisit it again in two weeks, I'd like to have that zipped up. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? All right, uh, we've got a motion to table until our next scheduled meeting. Which I think is still October 6th. I'm not sure if we can wait that long. Um, so let's leave it at next scheduled meeting. Uh, on a roll call vote, um, Amy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Um, April?
No.
Jean?
Yes.
And I M E S, uh, motion carries. So yeah, uh, Patty is, if you can get that to us, um, that would be fantastic. Um, we have one, two, three, four, five policies for first reading. Um, does anybody have any discussion around any of those at this point? That would be DGA, Authorized Signatures, DK, Payment Procedures, EBBC slash JLC, EMT Care and First Aid, uh, IHAM, Health Education and Exemption, and IHBG, Home Education Instruction.
Andy, this is Amy. I find it really helpful when Patty can share with us her, um, sort of institutional memory about, like, the law was changed at this point, and then the policy was changed at this time in reaction, or the policy hasn't been changed. And I just wonder if she can give us that sort of rundown for those policies that are up for first reading tonight?
Sure, Patty, you're prepared to do that?
Sure. Uh, it's pretty simple. These all came in in our most recent, um, update based on the current legislation. So these were sent out by school board. They send them out twice a year, fall and spring, and the spring policies, I think these are from the spring that got released late. Um, so they're just on there as a result of changes in legislation, um, and recommending that we update them. So there, there's nothing really to add other than the footnotes that will explain what the changes were in the law. So thank you.
Andy, this is April. I'm just looking at policy DK and the recommended policy. Um, I have some concerns about how we're currently doing things. Um, right now, our manifests come in, and only two board school, two school board members sign those, which is less than a majority. We do not discuss our mandates in, um, public, and many of their school boards do. So, um, just kind of a note, that is when we need to take special attention and kind of familiarize ourselves with so we can talk about what we need to go, do going forward. Because at present, we don't have a majority of the board approve those manifests before they're signed. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments on any of these other policies? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see on the next page. We also have, um, the facilities use policy on a third reading. Does anybody have any input on the facilities use policy currently?
Andy, this is Ann. Um, I did send off, um, late to Patty my, um, documentation on KF. I had a bit of an accident. I'm not able to use my hands. So, um, I wanted to find out if we could have our third reading at our next meeting. could have our third reading at our next meeting.
Sure. I'm okay with that. Um, Patty, is that something, um, Anne, are you, okay, if she forwards those changes, were, were they suggested changes or were they just questions?
Uh, suggested changes.
Okay. Um, are you okay if Patty sends those to the rest of us so we can take a look?
Yes, yes. Um, I know Kathy's the one that updates them. So I didn't know if it would be her to have a conversation with me. Um, as I say, I, I can't use my hands. So.
Yeah.
Uh, typing is not very clear. So I just wanted to leave that open for her.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. Um, so yeah, we, we can definitely push facilities use off until next time. Um, so I think that's the end of policy then.
Andy, before we move forward, before just talking about KF, um, maybe this was asked before and I missed it and I'm sorry if that happened, but are there any recommendations by our facilities manager to change any of our fees based on current cost?
I did send a couple of recommendations off to Patty and Amber. One would be to raise the hourly fee that we invoice out for the custodial charge, um, from $35 an hour to $40 an hour. And what that does is cover our highest paid custodian on the weekend. Um, their overtime rate for years to come. So we're not losing on that. And I also recommended a new fee, which would be a $30 administrative application fee, which is pretty standard in the school districts, which would, it would cover the costs that our office works on scheduling whatever group may be coming in going, for lack of better words.
Thank you. I see those now. It just didn't say it was recommended by our facilities manager. Thank you, Josh.
You're welcome.
All right. So agenda item number six, information items. Is there anything under there, Patty? It's like no.
I actually did have one. Um, Anne asked at the last meeting about the 3D printers and I did check in. Um, those were to be provided for the Innovation Academy and, um, they are on hold. They haven't been ordered yet.
Thank you, Patty.
All right. Um, so, agenda item number seven is our second public comment section. Um, so we will do it the same way as we did the first. We will take a look for hands. So if you're on the computer and you would like to, um, contribute to public comment, please use the raise hand button. And after that, we will check in with the phone lines to see if there's anybody on the phone that wants to contribute as well. So Chris, do we have any hands?
We do. We have Brian G., who, uh, now is the store.
All right.
Thank you. I want to preface my statement by saying how appreciative and grateful I am for our teachers, paraprofessionals and support staff. However, in the public sector, if you make an accounting mistake that costs a community a million dollars, there are repercussions. If you don't communicate the status of projects to all stakeholders, directly ignore a directive from your governing body, wait until last minute to communicate changes, not once, but twice in a month, fail to plan accordingly and take no responsibility for shortfalls, there are repercussions. Best of intentions aside, Ms. Sherman has taken no accountability for any of these instances and hasn't shown that any future issues will be handled any differently. And as her governing body, I and many other residents and volunteers in Pembroke are ready to hold this board accountable during the next election. We deserve representation that holds our administration to a higher standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the floor is Melanie Camello.
Hi. Um, I just have a quick comment, um, about the last minute bus changes and I've been on the meeting all night. I understand what happened. It doesn't sound like it's going to be fixed that quickly. Um, and just talking to thinking in the community, one thing I just wanted to bring up, I know you guys talked about possibly hiring teachers to stay a little after, but I am a little worried about the younger students. Some of the things that I heard and parents were scrambling is they had planned on older siblings at the high school level to be making it to the bus stops for those kindergartners and first graders. And now that we've combined bus stops, what happened is some kindergartners and first graders walked home and there's a 45 minute lapse now before that older sibling's getting there. And I, I understand those families concerned and, you know, the families in the community tried to band together to make sure that doesn't happen, but it is a little concerning. Five, six, seven years, years old are, you know, there's bigger bus stops. They had to kind of combine those and just wouldn't want anything happening to our younger students. So I don't know what the answer is. Maybe we need to have some flexibility on the high school side. I mean, nobody really wants high schoolers to leave early, but maybe there's needs to be some kind of flexibility if an older sibling needs to make it home for a younger sibling. Um, and that was really my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all we have, uh, for hands raised. Um, do we want to go into our first, uh, we only have three callers on, I'll unmute them.
All right. All right. If you're on the phone, you are unmuted. If you would like to contribute to public comment, just go ahead and state your name. Okay. Think we're good? And one last check for hands?
No new hands.
All right. Then we will move on. We've already done non-public session. Um, we.
This is April. Before we go on, I know that we're not required to respond to public comment, but just for an educational, um, piece, could we, could you please make a comment about how the superintendent is not a direct employee of the Pembroke School District and that contract is a decision that's made by the SAU Executive Board? Thank you.
Um, sure. Yeah, that's accurate. Um, Patty is an employee of the SAU, um, not of Pembroke in particular. Um, so non-public session is done. We don't have any appointments and resignations. Correct, Patty? Okay. So, um, the one last piece of business, we've been changing our next meeting, pretty much every meeting lately, um, to keep with that two weeks. Um, the next scheduled meeting is on October 6th. Uh, I guess we need to talk about, Patty, do you have need for us to bump that forward? Would you like us to meet in two weeks?
Before we decide on that though, I just want to make sure people don't leave because we have a non-meeting and we may need to take action. So if people are interested in staying, it's probably need, the, the meeting probably needs to be recessed because you may need to take action after the non-meeting.
Okay.
So you will come back just before everybody leaves. I just want to make that clear. Uh, and then.
Can I clarify that just a little further, Patty?
Yes.
So for, for anybody listening at home, um, there's a kind of strange thing called a non-meeting. It's different from non-public, but it's still a private session. Um, we, you do that when you have to talk, uh, with the board members about negotiations. That's something that has to happen today. Um, so we will treat it as we did non-public earlier in the night. We will move people out into a different virtual room, um, and you will be admitted back in the case that we do need to take action afterwards, just so everybody's clear on what that's all about.
So in terms of the meeting, we do have the AREA meeting scheduled in two weeks on the 29th. Um, so you were scheduled, the twice a month schedule isn't really working out because there's an extra week in the month. Um, so I guess my only, I don't have written down when the hybrid would be scheduled to be over. I don't remember what the fourth week is.
I can figure it out.
Yeah, just trying to look, um.
Going, going back to the hybrid plan, the, the motion was for at least one month, but not limited to.
Right. So one, two, three, four, it would, so for the end of four weeks would be October the 9th.
So I'm, I'm fine with the sixth and it actually gives a little more time for the principals to gather data on how school's going and such.
Yep. And I didn't realize that 9/29 meeting was a Tuesday. So I think it's important that, that we, as many of us attend that as possible. So is everybody comfortable with having the, um, AREA meeting on 9/29 on Tuesday? I guess that's already set anyway. And then keeping our regularly scheduled board meeting for October the 6th?
This is April. I'm for keeping our October meeting as October the 6th, um, regarding the AREA meeting, 6:00 PM, meeting times are very difficult for me. Thank you.
Okay. Um, with that, I think that's the end of our business. I will not look for a motion to adjourn if we're going to have a non-meeting. Um, Patty, do we need to vote to go into a non-meeting in the middle of a meeting? Or can we just do it?
Um, you could probably just call a recess.
Okay. Um, so I'll go ahead and recess the meeting at 9:44 PM. Again, we will, the recording has started. We're back. Um, we have one piece of business we might take care of.
Andy, this is Amy. Can I go ahead and make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize, uh, Superintendent Sherman to enter into the memorandum of agreement between the Pembroke School Board, the Education Association of Pembroke and the Pembroke Support Staff Association, uh, that was proposed to us today, except that in section Roman number three, it will not reference the reopening plan having been approved. It will just reference set forth in its reopening plan. That's the end of the motion.
Well done. Thanks, Jean. Um, on a roll call vote, uh, Anne? Sorry, I didn't get, I, you, you speak so fast and it gets remuted. I can't.
Yes.
Thank you. April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, and with that.
This is Amy. I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. So we got, uh, Amy and Jean. I don't know if Sandy's still here or not anyway. Um, all right. To, so motion to adjourn at 10:10 on a roll call vote. Uh, April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Anne?
Bye.
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thanks, everybody. See you next time.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, I was still here.